Alright, so I think that you guys can see my screen now. It just says the Danco Group. Yeah, okay, great. Alright, well, thank you all for the opportunity to come before you. My name's Mackenzie Dibble. I'm the Development Project Manager for this project. So about a year ago, my colleague and the President of Danco Communities, Chris Dart, came before the Council to make a similar presentation. And we've been working alongside the city and Council to get the DDU drafted and approved. And we're really excited to be finally moving forward and gaining site control and getting the ability to develop this project further. So we're really excited about the opportunity of a mixed-use project located off the city-owned property off Taylor Way. And most of you likely know us, but I'm just gonna talk briefly about Danco, what we're up to, and showcase a few of our most recent and relevant projects. Our project architect, Cash Bouja, couldn't make it tonight. I do see that Valerie's on, so Valerie, if you want to chime in at any time when I'm going through the design slides, just go ahead. But I'm gonna be giving a short synopsis of the current concept and the preliminary sketches for the project. And the, the design hasn't changed since the last time we presented. So as I mentioned, I'm Mackenzie Dibble. I'm a Development Project Manager at Danco. And I've been with the company for about 10 years now. For about eight of those, I've worked in the Development Department. And I've worked on almost every one of the projects that we've placed in service in the past eight years. I've secured hundreds of millions of dollars of grants and soft financing and coordinated closings on construction projects and seen through each of the projects through the development phase. And also on the line with us is Chris Dart, President of Danco Communities. Chris has 27 years' experience in the construction industry and 19 years' experience developing, building, and managing affordable housing projects. So Danco Communities has developed 31 affordable properties, 26 of which have been placed in service or have been leased up. And Danco Property Management manages about 22 of these properties. So in total, that's over 1,400 affordable units developed to date, and we manage over 870 of them currently. Just a little more about Danco as a company. It's a group of companies that makes offers around housing, mostly affordable and some market-rate housing. The Danco Group has been in business since 1986. And in total, the company employs over 30, or I'm sorry, 300 employees. And we have three main branches within the Danco Group. The first being Danco Communities, the development company that I'm representing tonight. And we primarily provide workforce, affordable large families, senior and special needs, or permanent supportive housing. And then we have the contracting companies, Danco Builders and Danco Builders Northwest. We also self-perform some work like framing, concrete, cabinets, earthwork, painting, plumbing, and roofing. And then we've got Danco Property Management, our property management company. We mainly manage our own units, but we've recently started to make the third-party management offer as well. And we refer to ourselves as vertically-integrated, which is just kind of a fancy way of describing that we make all of the offers that I just described. Danco has extensive experience in multifamily and affordable housing. We've been working statewide for quite a while now. And some of our most notable projects include Bayview Heights in Eureka, Plaza Point Apartments in Arcata, which I'll showcase later, the Phyllis Rex Samoa Townhomes in Samoa, which I'll also talk further about, Creamy Road Townhomes in Arcata, Churchill Townhomes in Fortuna, Yaro Village in Fortuna, and River Bluff Cottages in Riedel, Redwood Village in Redway, Willow Creek Family in Willow Creek, and Monterey Gateway Apartments in Gilroy, California. We've got quite a few projects under construction currently. We actually just finished two in Santa Rosa, one called Sage Commons and the other called Orchard Commons. And we've got two in San Jose. One of them just closed construction financing in February, and another we're still working to get funding on. We just completed Sorrel Place in Arcata. And I'll be touching on that a little bit more on in the following slides. And that's a four-story building in downtown Arcata. It's a family affordable project. And then we've also got the Plateau in Fort Bragg, which will be finishing up in early summer, which is a 68-unit project with affordable family, senior, and special-needs housing. And then not pictured or noted on this slide are a couple of projects that we just recently closed. So we've got the Eureka Seventh and Myrtle Affordable Senior Housing in Eureka, as well as Oak Valley Villas in Clear Lake. And we're starting construction on both of those projects in the next month. So here's a quick look at our team. Dan Johnson is the overall founder and CEO of the Danco Group. Chris Dart is the President of the Development Company, Danco Communities. I'm a Development Project Manager with Danco Communities. Haley Delgrandy is filling a new role in the company, which is a Grants Manager. She's responsible now for submitting all of our funding applications that gain the funding possible to make these deals work. And then we've also got Blair Brown, our VP of Property Management. And Blair has three regional managers under her, and there's site management on all of the properties. So in the next couple of slides, we're gonna showcase a couple of our local and mixed-use projects. This is Plaza Point. It's a mixed-use senior affordable project in downtown Arcata. It's across from the Co-op. It was also designed by Kid Bouja Architects. And it was constructed roughly 10 years ago. There are 29 senior housing units, and it's a mixture of one- and two-bedroom units. Each of the rooms have balconies, and they've got views overlooking the surrounding Arcata area. There is a large community space with an exercise room, lounge, and large meeting room, community garden space, community commercial kitchen with cooking classes, and free exercise classes at what's now Move Well. The project was completed with a LEED Platinum certification and generates 100% of the electricity that tenants use onsite. And there's quite a sizable waiting list to move into Plaza Point, generally over 100 people on the waiting list at any given time. And then you'll also see there's commercial on the bottom floor. And this slide, you can kind of just see some of those commercial spaces on the inside. Now we've got Sorrel Place, which we just completed in the last few months in Arcata. It's a 44-unit family housing project. It's actually just one block away from the one I just spoke about. It's designed by DG Architects, which is another architect we work with. There's a mixture of one- and two- and three-bedroom apartments. It's four stories tall and has large community spaces, including a kitchen, a gaming room, a lounge for teens, unique outdoor totlot area with climbing wall, boulders, and ropes. There's a community garden area and also access to free exercise classes. And this project is net zero as well, with 100% of the electricity that's used onsite, generated onsite. This project is kind of unique because it was funded with HSC Funding, which is short for Affordable Housing Sustainable Communities. And it's a type of financing that uses cap-and-trade funding. And it's centered around greenhouse gas reductions. So there's a sizable green and sustainable transportation component to the project. And we developed this project in tandem with the City of Arcata. And we were able to leverage the HSC funds to bring sidewalk improvements, trail extensions, an electric bus, bus passes for residents, a bike-share program, and the, an electric vehicle charging station. And you might have seen these newer bike banks get put in around the plaza that was a part of this project. This is the Phyllis Rex Samoa Townhomes in Samoa, California, with an 80-unit project with 20 units that are for permanent supportive housing. The, the whole project is a family project, also with one, two, and three-bedroom apartments. It's got great views of the Humboldt Bay and the Pacific Ocean. And it has quite a few unique features. One of the most unique is that each of the three-story townhomes has a garage underneath, which is pretty uncommon for affordable housing projects. And there's also about 10 apartments in the community building. And then in the community building, there's a large community space, exercise room, laundry room. There's barbecues, there's basketball courts, community gardens. And tenants receive bus passes and free internet in all of the units. And one of the most unique things about this project is that it's co-located with medical service. Open Door Clinic has opened a branch there and is starting to operate inside of the community space. This project is also net zero, and it leased up as soon as it was ready. So this is the first slide of the design slides for this project. This is the design that Cash and his team have come up with. And so we're just gonna be going through a couple of layers of that. We've been having an idea of doing a project in Blue Lake for quite a while. There was some idea to develop the previous Calgon property, but it didn't end up working out in the end. So Chris started discussing the possibility of developing this mixed-use project on a city-owned property. And Cash's offices produced some of these conceptual designs. And we're still pretty early on in the design process. Not much has been done since the last time we met. But the project still has quite a ways to go. It needs to go through all the different land use approvals, design review, et cetera. But the idea is that it'll be a mixed use of commercial and residential with amazing views and a really great energy. So the current design that we have is 40 residential units, also consisting of one, two, and three-bedroom units with onsite management. We've had some high-level conversations with various commercial tenants, as was spoken earlier, that have interest, but there's nothing concrete as of now. And so this is the site plan as it is now. And the structure was laid out onsite responding to the existing roadway and opportunity zone constraints while accommodating varying commercial type of vehicular access and a minimum of 80 parking spaces, which is about two per unit. This is the ground-level plan. So the current design includes over 20,000 square feet of mixed-use space, including some common-use areas for the residential facility as well as commercial spaces. The commercial spaces are set up for public access from the visitor parking in the sidewalk. And the south-facing building pockets of setbacks from the road allow for possible outdoor gathering and eating areas. The residential floors offer two types of units, one accessed by a common corridor and the other accessed by the open roof deck. And on this floor, there's 21 units. And moving on to the upper level, essentially the same as the mid-level, there's just 19 residential units here. And there is the current idea for a wine tasting room or wine shop accessed by the common elevator with its own roof deck. And this is a rendering of the project. And yeah, I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to present and to bring some ideas forth for the project. We're really looking forward to moving ahead in site control and developing further. And Chris and I and Valerie are here if there's any questions on Danco or on the project as it's presented today. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mackenzie. Is there anyone that would like to ask a question? Mackenzie, from the council first, and then we'll go on to the very public council members. Any questions or comments? Alright, questions from audience? We will be having a three-minute limit on our questions. And we're going to not have a back and forth so much, but make your comments or questions. And to the next person, we have a time people here. Alright, Mr. Carlson, did you have a question?
First of all, why are they gonna build into the floodplain? That is a floodplain. That does some underwater. Who's gonna pay for the sewer improvements of the plant? Who's gonna pay for the extra law enforcement to place this? Who's gonna clean up all the mess on the river from the drug use if they bring in a housing project?
Thank you for your question.
Please have them logged in the records, so it shows.
Is anyone gonna answer that?
Yeah, we want some answers.
Well, the, well, this is really the time more for your comments. But I mean, this is not really gonna be a back and forth so much.
We are the residents of this town, so we have a right to ask questions and have answers done.
Okay.
We want them answered.
Okay, I understand, I understand. The floodplain issue and the sewer improvements, and what was your third?
Law enforcement.
And, and clean up this mess.
Yeah, clean up the mess.
What mess?
Drug use.
Drug use. We live next to the creek, and we still have teenagers and young kids that throw garbage and stuff in our creek.
You can't bring it out.
Bring more along that creek.
But whatever they're suggesting to build has a common manager. I don't think a manager-
A common manager doesn't work.
And what I'm concerned about is off-site. I'm sure they're gonna keep that area clean, although I had seen some improvements in the Taylor Way area that are not maintained by the little flower gardens and stuff like that. I mean, they get placed and then they don't get maintained. What I think you're concerned about is along the river.
Right.
And garbage out of cars being-
That's kind of not related to what is happening in the future. You're wondering right now who's-
No, this is what's gonna happen in the future.
We're talking about associated with-
Alright, okay, I don't usually do this, but we're not gonna have a constructive meeting if everybody's talking at once. I, we're going to, if this is really a time for questions and comments, and then we move on to the next person. So your comment, your questions were about the floodplain, the sewer improvements, and law enforcement. And the garbage and garbage. Alright, let's address those. Manny, did you want to tell them about the floodplain?
Sure.
And then-
So the, the property in question is not in the floodplain. It's out of the floodplain. It's out of the 100-year flood. The city is also doing restoration projects on Power Street right now, along this very stretch that goes in front of this. We just received a grant for about $600,000 in partnership with Matterful Alliance to do some restoration and habitat restoration for the creek. The creek for the city is very much a feature of the whole Taylor Way area. And it's something that the city's been working to bring resources so that we can improve the habitat, so that we can remove the invasive species, and we can improve the aesthetic value of the creek. As far as the sewer improvements, yes, there will need to be sewer made as part of any project on this type of scale, and those improvements will be borne by the developer. And that's part of the DDA process, is identifying what improvements are necessary and what those costs are that are associated with that and how those improvements will be made. So those are all considerations that are being made. As far as issues with the river, I, I don't, I, I don't really know how to answer that. I don't, I, I'm at a loss to even address that, so.
What part about the river do you think you-
I, I, I just don't, I think the comment was a little bit, I'd rather just not go there if it's fine with the comment.
It happens. You can't ignore it. It really happens.
Oh, it does happen. It happens all day.
Yeah, currently, we just can't answer it.
It currently happens. It currently happens.
Yes, yes.
The more housing projects you bring in, the more problems we're gonna have as a community.
I think that there's a misconception about what affordable housing projects are. And I think there's a misconception about this community and what are-
If it can't afford a regular apartment or house, they have to be in an income base, which means they're lower income, which means odds are we're gonna have a higher crime problem because these are usually the people that don't care about the property or the town they're in.
Those are low-income, and we live here, so.
I live here too.
Okay, well.
And low-income is at a point now where a, a beginning teacher actually is a low-income person. So you know, you're making a few assumptions.
Yeah.
I think the city would be more welcome senior living than anybody else.
And the other thing I want to say is that, and we've talked about this at many meetings, is that the state is mandating that cities, even cities as small as Blue Lake, have to have low-income housing. We have a housing problem in California. So even a little town like Blue Lake affected. I was in Santa Monica a few months ago, and I saw a parking lot that had a sign on it that said, "Low-income housing." This was two blocks from the beach in Santa Monica, low-income housing. It was a parking lot. They were turning it into that. Eureka, you see what's happening with them in Old Town. We have a mandate that we have to provide low-income housing. We have asked people to have auxiliary dwelling units, ADUs, in their backyards. We've given them breaks on permitting. We've given them breaks on water and sewer. But not everybody wants a rental on their, in their backyard or in their barn. We're a one-square-mile city. The city has a mandate that we need to provide at least 45 low-income housing for the, for the size of our city. And so if we don't do it, we're out of compliance. What happens? They can take over your city government, okay? So you won't have a city council here anymore. You'll have someone from the state that comes in, and then they'll do whatever they want. I mean, they will just provide housing, whatever. It's not gonna, it may not look like something like it. It might not look good.
They're gonna ask for permission if they can take over.
It's like, we don't have any say.
Yeah, that's it. Why are they asking our permission if they can just take over?
They're not asking. There's, this is-
You just said, "We have to do it."
That's what I'm saying. We have to do it. But what I'm saying is, we can do it our way and have control over it with a nice-looking project, which I think is what we're going towards here. Or we can, we can let some other entity come and take over our city government, which I would not want to see happen to Blue Lake. You would not have a vote been on that, and they would put whatever they wanted. So anyway, I wasn't gonna get into a back and forth, but I went into a back and forth.
Just one question.
Yeah.
Could the city recommend not just having senior housing in the 45?
No, because low, you cannot discriminate low and housing by saying-
You just said it was a low-income.
Yeah.
Now you just said it is.
I think 60% of the median income. Maybe Danco can answer questions about how people qualify to get in.
The DDA says below 60% of the median. And the median, from what I saw, median single income is around very down, and family is around two. Maybe there's more detail that you could be sharing about that.
Chris, did you want to remark on how people qualify to rent their properties?
Yeah, sure. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, so there, we have to, generally, we put a range of incomes. So we can go as high as 80% of median income for Humboldt County, and their incomes are published. I was just looking at the chart. But for a, let's call a four-person household, which would be a typical family household, 80% of the area median income is $55,000 a year. 60% would be $41,000 a year. And then 40% would be $28,000 a year. So that's generally the range that we do. We put some 80s, some 60s, some 40s, maybe a couple of 30s. Usually just about 10%, but we range the income. So you really have, you know, families that, working families that are living here. Maybe they, maybe they're working at the grocery store, or somebody mentioned a teacher. I mean, you know, these are, these are not, we're not proposing to do, you know, deep targeting, very or extreme-low income here. We are proposal, just based on the need, is for families and family income, which is, you know, the people that are already working in the community with, maybe just have, you know, just mid-range type jobs. Hope that helps.
Yeah, that helps, Chris. And then the other question that came up was in terms of your management. Now, you have a manager onsite at all of your places. And I know that you always choose the best, the best place for the manager to live, the nicest place. So my question is, what is the process that your manager uses when there's an issue with drugs or alcohol or crime?
Yeah, so we, we, we have a manager that lives at all of our properties. We, as you mentioned, we do develop the nicest unit for the managers, because we try to attract high-quality managers. So we, we produce, we build them the three-bedroom, two-bath unit, usually has nice views, and it's generally the best unit in the complex. But we, all the residents are screened, our potential residents are screened. We do background check. We do credit checks. You know, we do the regular general screening that any landlord would do. And then we have house rules, so all of the residents have to follow house rules. And, you know, frankly, we don't have a lot of problems with, you know, people screwing up in our facilities. Because as Mackenzie mentioned, we have such a long waiting list of people that want to move in here. People feel lucky and fortunate to be able to get a unit at a, at a, you know, lower-income rent, and they want to stay there. And what we found is we have house rules. We have things that are able to, you know, we have ways to enforce, you know, evictions. If people are, you know, making extreme noise or disturbing the residents or, you know, doing whatever they're doing that they're not supposed to do, we can enforce evictions. And generally speaking, we don't evict a lot of people from our properties because people don't want to get kicked out. They're fortunate to be able to have waited in line and got a unit, and they don't want to lose it. And so, to be honest, our low-income properties are, we have less evictions than we do our market-rate properties. So because, because of the reduced rent, people don't want to be kicked out.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Oh, there's a hand. Hang on just a minute.
Julie Christie. Hey, guys. I'm not sure Zoom's gonna work for me to have comment. Is that an option?
Yeah, go ahead. We can hear you just fine.
Okay, well, I, I know you guys, you know, I've been trying to keep up with all your meetings. And I know the heat's on now because you've done a lot of processing and planning for months and a while. And everybody's kind of being able to kind of get on the bus finally. And I think it's, it's very appropriate time to really just be answering all the questions that the community has. And perhaps that's gonna take another forum day prior to May 4th, I believe, was the next proposed community input time. Also, you know, just in retrospect from other community members, families, friends that have housed at Danco, all I've ever heard honestly is complaints about the infrastructure of those units, the delinquency of getting them fixed, just the, just completely everything you can think of, rot, drywall, electrical. I mean, it just sounds like a nightmare 90% of the time. So nobody's really commented on that, but if you actually talk to people that, you know, are renting for Danco and have been for a long time, there's multiple complaints in that area. I'm just throwing that out there. And I'm also gonna throw out my point I threw out months and months ago, that I think it's really, it's something we should be cautious of getting rid of, some of our last open land that's available to the city. I mean, I know we can really revenue so much from festivals and festivities that are- I mean, I know we can really revenue so much from festivals and festivities at our park, like Manny mentioned earlier, we can have like five thousand. People at our park, and we're gonna lose all that parking, we're gonna lose that open space, and I just think we always should be very cautious of that, since it seems to be a priority. Um, for our community, and I'll just leave it at that, I appreciate everybody's time, and I, um, strongly suggest and advise just some more community time. Just to get everybody more comfortable and have, uh, more time to explain all the little things, is all. You guys have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Lisa.
I need to go. Uh, well. They can hear you, yeah. Right here. Hi, yeah, my name is Lisa Cooper. Drop my mask a little bit, I would ask some questions fundamentally about, um. The number of units, and there's some other things that people have brought up, um, whoever that was, about opening space, because HCO did. FYI, tenants, it says HCO, which is a, Humboldt County Association of Governments, um, that. Established the housing elements that were assigned to different communities, they said lands protected from development include open space, aggrands, and environmental habitats. So that's from the HCO document, but, so, speaking to what that person just said, um, but the number of units. There's some inconsistency, the housing element, the new units on table two, and also table nineteen and twenty. They have, um, this includes, those are the cycles that, um, and again, I wanna make a correction, I think the word mandate is not what is. Asked of the city, we are supposed to consider housing. I think that's when I've talked to the HCO person and also the city planner here, the word is consider it before you do anything else. So the mandate, and you also have to have the space available to do these kind of things, so, um, so it's gotta be appropriate space, so I think mandate. It's the art of considering, and if you don't have the space and you don't have it, that's just the way it is. You have to annex property, I guess, to do that, but I'm just making that correction, because I've not been told from the HCO staff. That developed the regional housing needs assessment, which is the one that is signed, um, between the last cycle and this cycle. Thirty-four units, so I'm not sure where this forty, forty-five units is coming from, so I'm questioning the discrepancy between. The city's housing element, the regional housing needs assessment. And what is being proposed here, and why that number is what it is. My next comment might be, you did in the housing element, look at vacant sites inventory. Or other sites being looked at to accommodate this type of thing, I'd like to know about that. I know the city owns this, but there are other spaces that have been identified in the housing element for that. So, because the scale of what we're talking about, uh, forty units, first of all, again, that's not consistent with what is in HCO or the housing element document that's being developed. So those units, I've seen the scale of that in the city of Arcata, that's huge down there, that's a lot of space, that's a lot of impervious surface. So, um, I find that, um, that scale of development in that area, I'm wondering about the review of these other possible. Sites that have been identified in the housing element to be considered for accommodating.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, I'll talk faster. Um, so, um, and I understand CECL is gonna be covered by, um, Danco. Question, answer? CECL is gonna be covered, because I did not see, I don't know if I saw that in the, um, agreement. At all, that that was spelled out, they've talked about they were gonna be looking at soils and toxic matters, and then the other thing would be that. Um, um, that the, the issue, I just heard about this grant that was received, and it's so ironic. That we're putting six hundred thousand dollars into restoration, when you're gonna have a giant housing development down there. Impervious ser- surfaces, parking area. When, again, the idea of open space or maybe scaling down the development that's near a riverine system, and maybe looking at other lots. For, for infilling, um, should be considered, so the number of units, make sure CECL is covered in that. And including looking at other vacant sites for inventory for housing, and I understand the need for the housing, I don't disagree with that, I think it's the setting. And the, the fact that it is a river system that a lot of us, um, really appreciate, so I'd like to look at other sites. And, and I'm curious about why forty units is pushed, when that is not in any of the documentation from HCO or even our housing element.
Thank you. Okay, um, so your comments are noted.
Can we get some answers, please?
Well, was there a question there, CECL, yes, that's.
The number of units is not consistent with the other elements, the idea of looking at other sites.
Yeah, well, I think we've talked to you about the reasoning behind the number of units, I mean.
No, I, the, I gave you points from table two in the housing element document, table nineteen and twenty, and also. The table in the regional housing assessment, and in talking to the housing assessment contact there. Um, the back, the fifth and sixth cycles, thirty-four units. It's not four.
Yeah.
And the current cycle extends into thirty, twenty-three-one, is that current?
So, so just so you know, and Lisa, I know our planner has gone over this with you multiple times and answered this question. I think it's just not the answer you're looking for, um, but the, the arena allocation is not a stagnant allocation. And it's not just about meeting the arena allocation, developments have to be economically feasible, and there's tipping points in development. And so, the city is not, if the city plans and accommodates the thirty-four, it's not, it doesn't end there. There's, there's projected allocations that are going to continue on through multiple cycles that we're having to plan for. And we're having to plan for this in the future, and we are looking at infill development, and we have done a site analysis to look at. How we can accommodate. So it's not.
But again, if you run out of space and you don't have it, you're not required to do.
But we do have it, is the problem, we do have five, we have the developable space there.
Yeah, I would say the forty units is, um, the question, and where they're located, whether they all be down there, or whether it be in other, other spaces. And again, it's considered, that's what the HCO is asking us to do, is consider it.
It's not just consider, you have to plan and you have to accommodate. And the state is mandating that we do that through our housing element, and that's the other portion that you're leaving out, we do have a housing element. And that's what accommodates for the state mandates.
And the housing element on table two, page thirteen, has, um, the twenty-six units, which was cycle five, and on table nineteen and twenty. It has thirty-four units.
Like I said, it's not a stagnant number, it's going to continue.
Yeah, I understand. You have to consider it every eight, nine years, but if you don't have the space, then you just decide to, in that side, present that argument. And that is a quote from Una Smith of HCO, who I spoke with.
So. You know, I think part of the problem is that, you know, that property used to be all overgrown, and it was really ugly looking, and the city came in. And cleaned it all up, and left some trees, and now it really does look like a park, it's a lovely spot. And people are bringing their dogs out there and playing frisbee with them, and they're thinking, this is a park, this looks like a park. That was not the intention, in fact, the intention of that park out there was to be an industrial park. That was going to be industry, it moved from that to business. And now it's moving to a district, which means that we're mixing, we're mixing our use of, with housing and. The retail underneath it. So I think, I think that's part of the problem, is, to the city's credit, they made it look really beautiful out there, I know, I bike there all the time. I've seen how beautiful it's, it's looking, and so in people's minds now, they're thinking, this is another park. It's, it's not another park, it's where we're going to develop what's needed in terms of our housing, and in terms of our retail, we have no retail out here.
I know, I've heard that too, I've, I understood my comment about the scale of it, the number of housing, and the fact that it isn't mandated. Because what's presented is that a scale that isn't, is, is, is a bit, is a bit, not a bit, but it is definitely. Changing some things, so I, I'm arguing that the scale, the number's not consistent across the different, um, authorities that are written up. Between the arena and the housing element, and, um, that there's other sites to be looked at for, for some infilling. Before just going gangbusters out here in a space that a lot of people in the community have expressed.
Can I ask what other space you're thinking about?
Yeah, what side are you thinking?
Yeah, as I pointed out, we are one square mile. We have asked people to put rentals in their backyard, and some people have, some people have. We've given them breaks on that, but not everybody wants to give up their gardens for a rental, not everyone wants to be. You know, we have a beautiful town square, now some developers have looked at our town square, which I'm really proud of the fact that the city. Was able to buy that lot, finally, after forty-five years of my living here. My dream is they really realize that there's a beautiful park across from our post office, some developers have looked at that and said. We could put something there, is that what we want? I didn't think it was, okay. I didn't think that's what we wanted there, I think what we wanted there was what we have there, a beautiful spot where we can get our mail. Get our cup of coffee over there and sit in our town square, finally, Blue Lake has a town square. So now where are we going to put a development? And this is what I'm saying with our district, that's what it was built for, and that's what the direction is of the council. Um, any other questions? Yes, sir.
My name is, excuse me, Jeff Bird. I keep hearing the word mandated.
Yeah.
So you said that if the city doesn't, um, put in the designated housing, then the state takes over the. And the housing will be put in part of the state once it's done, what's, what is the, what's the timeline on that, what does that look like, because I have not heard of that before? So if we don't, if we don't develop something, how long do we have before the state takes over and does whatever the state does?
So it's not so much that the state itself is going to develop, but this, there is. There is a regulation, there is a law on the books right now, that if the city does have developable space. And it's zoned for housing, and it does allow housing, if someone comes forward. And wants to do an affordable housing project, the city is mandated to negotiate in good faith to move that project forward. If we can't find a reason to say no, we are mandated to move that forward. Technically, Danco could come forward under, and I don't, I can't remember, if it's SB nine.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, could come in right now and say, we wanna exercise our right to that development. Excuse me?
We changed the zone.
We, we rezoned it months ago, we went through a three and a half, three and a half year process to.
It was in the planning commission for a number of.
So the zone now allows for a mix of uses, it mandates if you are going to do housing, that you have to do a mix of retail commercial space as well. Because the city was trying to leverage the housing to be able to get the retail commercial development, because it's an investment we've never been able to attract to the community. Retail commercial is a very risky investment, construction costs are very high. Yeah, leveraging some housing is what makes that investment more. The district actually starts to create an economy on itself, so if you do have people living down there, all of a sudden, they have a need for services. They may have a need for a grocery store, they'll have a need for a place to get breakfast, they may have a need for a coffee shop, an ice cream. A recreation store, it starts to create reciprocal economies, and that was something that the city has been looking for for years, and has never been able to attract.
How much is the city getting paid for this property?
So we, this is part of this process that we're going through, the biggest benefit to the city is the retail commercial space. So that generates a retail sales tax.
But how much is the city getting paid for the property?
We are in the process of working through that. We're not around lease, the city's not selling the property.
So the VDI says one dollar a year for ninety-nine years. It's a lease.
So they're only paying you one dollar a year?
Well, it's a lease, so at the end we'll get it back.
It's, so the ground, so the city is leveraging the property, well. We've never, we haven't been able to attract any developments to the district. Through this ground lease process, we're now able to attract not only housing, which is a priority. But also retail commercial space, which is a huge priority for the city, because it's the empty bucket of revenue that the city does not have right now. So, the city has been looking for opportunities to bring in small businesses and create space, but there are no. There are no available spaces right now, and no one's willing to make the critical investment in the infrastructure to do that. So by leveraging these programs, we not only get housing, which is critically needed, and there are many people in our community who need housing right now. Who are either in overcrowded housing, who are in housing that's becoming unaffordable. Our rent out here is incredibly high, um, we're losing good people because we don't have space to accommodate them. So, this is an opportunity to leverage both of those to get benefit to the community, and to be able to take out of. An industrial context of, of property that has, um, you know, can be revitalized into a new district.
Just if I may, I just want.
Yeah.
I wanted to just respond to the clarification of that, because from what you said is different, I, I got more from what you're saying, is that. If there isn't movement on affordable housing, it's not like the state's gonna come in here and just banish this. But it's that your negotiating position is weakened for like somebody else, then through a state guidance.
Right.
Can have the leverage to say, no, it goes here, did I get that more or less, right?
And they can leverage also the density, so it can be a much higher density.
That's a good answer that I, I didn't understand, so thank you.
And that's part of the process with the surplus lands act, that every year now, the city has to notice the state and any interested developer. That's interested in affordable housing, that the city has underdeveloped or underutilized properties.
So you have outside pressure through that guideline, okay, I, I didn't understand it before, and then obviously, for the economic viability. Let's say, you know, Lisa said whatever, I think it was thirty-four units, well, maybe Danco, and, and, and no offense, I'm just putting this out. Okay, you need a certain number of units to have it economically feasible for you to develop, to throw all this capital at it. But I think these are things that I've not heard in the public forum, I understand that better. Whether I agree with this, or this is my vision or not, it's good to understand, for me at least, and perhaps all of you. What the mechanism here is that's at work, because. You know, yeah, I'd like, you know, I'm glad that the city cleaned up Taylor Way, I'd like it to just be a park, right, you walk by dog. Okay, that's me, so it's not viable, but trying to find something that fits to scale. For everybody's needs, perhaps, is what some of this is about, you know, so that's just one of the comment. I do appreciate that you all doing a lot of work and all that, and we all have our issues and concerns, so hopefully. That's what we're trying to get done, because it's, you okay, I don't know. But I'm really trying to understand, and I haven't understood all this before.
I'm sorry if I, I didn't explain it well enough, um.
Well, let's point out that we've been asking for a year now, that you guys have some dedicated meetings about this project, and we still don't have one. Here we are again at a city council meeting, beaten as. I know it is, I know it is, but you guys have an agenda, you've got something you gotta get done. This isn't, you know, people have been asking for a full year, since this thing came up in February twenty-twenty-one, we've been asking for forums. Specifically devoted to this topic, where people can come and ask questions and get answers, okay? You know, you just said yourself, this is what the council's doing, this, you know, it's not the council. We're, we're, we're a community, you guys represent us.
Exactly, we represent.
But you've been rolling over the top of us for the last year, we keep asking, we keep asking, and you give us zero.
I think there's a misconception.
We have questions, we want answers.
But we don't have, I, and we, I personally have tried to answer these questions, we don't have all the answers. I mean, as you've heard Mackenzie say, these are just concepts, we're not there yet, we haven't got to the point where we can even get to the point of. Architectural design, that we had to come up with a kind of a framework, so that we could get to a point where we could start this consideration process. But we don't know what it's gonna look like, and there's gonna be opportunities.
Of that contract, you know, a lot of stuff.
We, we have a framework, we do have a framework, but we also have zoning that's very protective of the city's interest. That was a three and a half year process to write the ozone, we looked at setbacks, we looked at lighting standards, we looked at noise standards, we looked at creek. Product enhancements, we looked at trail improvements, we looked at design standards. Those are the, the other protections that the community has when we go through a process. So there's multiple layers of processing that a development would go through, but first, we have to get to the point where we can even get to start that process. And so right now, we have a concept, it's forty-plus units with a twenty thousand square feet of retail commercial space. We don't know that that's gonna be the end product. Things may push and pull, things may change, we may look at, the design may change a bit, because we now have a bike park project. That we didn't have at the very beginning, that's gonna provide another green space and park enhancement. We're looking at additional improvements over onto the power plant, so how does that, how do we then coordinate that with? So how does that, how do we then coordinate that with street improvements and scalability and walkability? How do we make safety and regroupments? What other development might come in? That we might want to integrate with this. We have people who are interested in bringing out a recreation store and a grocery and some food businesses. So how do those start to get integrated into this plan? We're not there yet. We're trying to get there. We can't get there without having some type of ability for the developer.
I enter into.
And go into those studies and look at those, those impacts. So it's, it's, it's not that we haven't tried to answer, we just don't have all the answers yet. And like I said, things may change through the process. We may see that maybe some of the height restrictions, uh, maybe we don't like some of that, the, the buildable height. Maybe we want to scale it down, maybe we want to go taller. Maybe we want to push in a different direction. We don't know yet. And I think there was some misconception that we had more than we do. Literally what Mackenzie showed you is all that we have. That's all we've had for months.
Almost everything Mackenzie showed us, we could see on there for one second.
Exactly, that's all we have. That's all we have, except for cash.
There is a document in a document.
And it's right, this is the first, and this is the first time the council has seen it also. The council got it on Friday. And that's why we're here.
One of my questions or clarifications is how binding is the DDA, or is this our first step of seeing the actual project? Um, and so they'll still have iterations and changes before there's the final.
And maybe Russ can speak to what the DDA is, and maybe that, because it really is a very first cut at being able to look at this more. And the city, ultimately, the city owns the property. Ultimately, the city has the final say. Ultimately, the city can ask for more than what the developer is proposing. So we're really in the driver's seat, but we need to be able to go through a process. And so maybe, Russ, maybe you could jump in and talk a little bit about what the DDA is.
Uh, yes, thank you. Yeah, just briefly, there's basically two com- components to the transaction documents at this point. It's, they consist of the development agreement and the ground lease. And they both work in conjunction, uh, but the concept, of course, it's critical that Dan Co acquire some interest in the real property, uh, some contractual interest, so that it can then uh, invest the substantial amount of time, money, and effort that it'll take to develop an actual entitlement or permit package uh, for the development of the improvements on the site. There was an inquiry about SEQA and at what point in time, uh, is SEQA invoked and part of the process? SEQA evaluation is a component of the permitting process for any ultimate project proposed. So if this development agreement is ultimately entered with Dan Co, uh, between Dan Co and the city, Dan Co, of course, still has to pursue all the permits, entitlements, requisite studies, uh, and environmental evaluation, uh, that's a component of its, uh, development entitlement process. And all of those public processes will also be available to both the city and the, uh, community to participate in the development and scoping of the project. Obviously though, until Dan Co has some interest in the real property, some contractual right to ultimately develop there, they can't really start that permitting process. So that's the concept. To create a development agreement with some parameters, what the city is willing to entertain at the site and would like to see developed at the site, like including the commercial retail space, it's a component of the development agreement. Once Dan Co has that in hand, then it can proceed, uh, with the application process. And then invoke all the additional public, uh, processes and scrutiny that'll take place during the permitting process. And that is the, the area where a lot of the community questions will be answered and vetted during the normal development process, which has, um, natural input, uh, points as a component of any development for the, uh, community to participate. Uh, just one quick point of order, uh, for the mayor, again, to ensure full and fair public comment. It, again, would be recommended that the mayor go ahead and receive all the comments from every member of the public that wishes to raise a comment or question, uh, potentially inventory questions and direct those to staff at the conclusion of uh, public comment to the extent that counts and the mayor deems appropriate. Uh, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other questions or comments for the record?
Uh, wait, I can't. I believe it.
Kaylin McKenzie, maybe Lori Ponting? Oh. Hey Lori, is that you?
I have a question also. I don't know if Lori has a question too, so just to mention it. This is, this is Lynn Glenn.
Okay, Lynn Glenn, why don't you go ahead then?
Okay, yeah, thank you, and thanks for another, um, he- hearing about this project for the public to comment on. Um, so as a, a citizen of, of Blue Lake, um, a major concern for me, and I think all of you, is of course, income to the city. Um, we, we're a small city and we have limited sources of income, and so it's pretty important to manage, um, our opportunities. Um, so, and this being the city's property, the, the only property that we have to create income, it's, as I've said before, and you all said too, it's pretty important to be thinking about that in relationship to this project. So I'm wondering, I would, I would like to see the council ask for an analysis of any project that comes before you for your, just for this property, as to how much income it's likely to produce. Um, and some of the, some of the things that we're hearing are more, are pretty difficult. Yeah, economic analyses can be done, and they may not be precise, but if, if I were on council, I would want to know what the, um, what the, uh, potential is for our city, and that would help you make better decisions about what projects are appropriate and what projects are acceptable. Um, are there better ones that we need to wait for, or anyway, I, I would like to see an economic analysis of anything that comes before you to be done with this property, and that would include, um, this project. So you might ask something more specific than it's going to increase, um, the demand, there does be some, perhaps some retail, but maybe after that analysis, you might say, well, we want to have certain types of retail, and we need to have retail that is gonna create X amount of dollars or some income. So that, so that's a question and a concern as a citizen, and something I would hope that the council would do. Um, and I'm also wondering, um, kind of what Chris was saying. So this, the, um, agreement period comes to an end. The design is, is proposed to the city council and the council doesn't like it. There's some major problems, um, and the council doesn't think it's gonna work for some pretty important reasons. And does the council have the ability to reject, um, the project and move on and look for something else? So that's another question I have. Um, and then, um, with this, the, the third thing is that, uh, Dan Co, if, if this does proceed and the project is.
Second, Lynn, thirty seconds, go ahead, finish your.
Last question is that Dan Co would have a lot of control over the city's property as less see for ninety-nine years. And has the city council talked to other cities who've had similar relationships with Dan Co to find out how that's worked for them, have been, there have been problems, it's kind of like due diligence for a renter or for a tenant, you know, you want to be sure you know exactly. I'm not saying there's anything bad. I think Dan Co's done some pretty good, pretty good job. They have some beautiful projects. But I would want to know from other cities that have a similar relationship, how has it worked for you? And how might it work for us as a city?
Thank, thank you Lynn, thank you for your call. Oh, Kay, Kaylin McKenzie, are we able to access that person? And then Jen, Jen Sauter felt I saw the bottom.
Uh, can you hear us now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yeah, so this is Dave Ponti.
Oh, okay, it says Kaylin McKenzie, okay.
I know, that's our grandchildren.
Okay.
Who live also here in Blue Lake. And so, you know, I'm curious, cause I, I listened to the mayor talk about the acquisition of the property for this, the downstairs, downtown square. And, you know, what that does for the, the city, and I've always had a concern about the historical downtown of Blue Lake. Um, and, uh, I was, in, in the thirty years ago, when we first moved to Blue Lake, was involved in the industrial park. I'm part of the board there and, and saw a very little process there after Ultra Power. Um, it seems that there's an opportunity to develop the historical downtown. Now with the Huntsinger property available, wouldn't it be a better idea to somehow acquire that property and develop our original downtown as opposed to going to what exists in the Powers Creek area now? Um, it, it seems that development of our historical downtown makes more sense to the city versus going off into this particular area. So I'm curious about people's comments that way.
Yeah, thank you, Dave. This is Mandy.
Hello, Mandy.
And yeah, we, we are trying to put a lot of energy into the historical downtown. Um, there's, as you know, we're a little bit limited with our commercial tenants, um, and, and property owners. Um, there, I think there is a lot of opportunity, and we now have an economic development planner, Emily Wood, who's sitting next to me. Um, and she's been doing a lot of outreach and trying to find ways and mechanisms to revitalize the downtown a bit. Um, the coffee shop is a perfect example of the city making that, some inroads there. The city, um, provided a small startup loan for the coffee shop. Uh, we also, uh, partnered to do the sidewalk improvements to be able to meet ADA accessibility, so that both of those shops now, um, are legally accessible and can legally have a business. Um, and we, we put a lot of effort into advocating, uh, on various levels with environmental health, um, small business to, um, to aid in bringing, uh, the coffee shop there. And we now have another business coming in, um, that we've actively worked with the, the property owners to, uh, to attract. Uh, we've also been doing some outreach with, uh, Michael Fields, a new owner of the Lager Bar. Uh, we've been doing some outreach to the owners of the previous Stardos building. Um, and we have been actively trying to attract investment, um, to the former Huntsinger property, now the Renick property. The city also received a six hundred thousand dollar grant to transition the town square property into a real town square park, and those improvements will be coming this summer. Um, so we are trying to do what we can, but we do have some limitations. We are, we're also working with Delarte and have been providing some small business, um, grants. We provided one to Abundance, trying to um, aid them in their business opportunities. So we don't see them, uh, that we can't work on both. Um, there's different opportunities in the Powers Creek district than there are in the historical, and we're working for, in both, uh, in both realms, and we see value in both of them.
Thank you.
So, okay, so Mandy, it's Lori now.
All right.
Hi, um, so I think my perspective from Dave's is different. It's more about the Powers Creek district and the concern for what seems to be like a, a fast pace it through, um, this development or this, um, potential development on Powers Creek and the, the change in the district and, and I want to support what Lisa Hoover, um, has said about this. And I would like to know that there is a more concerned and slower pace effort to make this either work or review or adjust to what this could be or should be or shouldn't be. Um, so I just kind of wanted to add that to the conversation that I think that those of us that have lived here thirty plus years are very concerned about the, what appears to be a rapid growth, even though I know the city council's been working on this and there is the state mandate for, um, growth in cities. But it just seems not quite the right fit. Um, and I don't think that maybe the city has been able to communicate why it would be a better fit or the right fit for the city. And, you know, I'm not saying that it isn't, but I'm not sure that it is. And I think that there are a lot of people that are within the city that have lived here a long time who need to either buy into it or be, have the ability to question it um, before you're gonna get the support that maybe the city needs or the understanding that the community needs to make this, um, the right thing for Blue Lake. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that that was said and understood, because I think a lot of people feel like this is being kind of like uh, um, to put it kind of rally, shove, shoved down our throats. Um, so it, I'm sure that's not the intent, but it does have that appearance, and I think that there are probably people within the community that feel that way. And because there's not been a lot of communication, um, between what the, the city, the people in the city know. I don't care, it, whether it's thirty seconds or whatever, but I'm just saying that there needs to be uh, understanding within the city council, the city manager, and everybody that's making these decisions, that the residents maybe need a little, a lot more understanding and communication and involvement to, to kind of be comfortable with this idea. Um, so, thank you.
Thank you. Um, this has gone through the planning commission for a number of years, and they've come up with the opportunity zone, then it came to the city council. We tweaked it a bit also. We have our city engineer, our city planner that worked on this, as well as, um, other staff, including our manager. And maybe it feels like it's fast, but in reality, it's been going on for at least, I would say, three years and probably more. Yeah. Oh, okay. I was just, okay, so. All right, uh, yes.
Okay, um, I, I appreciate that, you know, this needs to be a project that brings in the city's, um, revenue. And, um, I do think that the, um, the public needs to be a little bit more informed, or maybe, maybe they need to inform themselves more. I know that I talked to one of my neighbors who was at the meeting on Saturday, and he didn't know that this was going on. We, you know, we, we need to take some responsibility to, to be informed as a public as well. Um, one thing that, that I'm concerned about is, is the creek, and, um, there are some opportunities, recreational opportunities, I don't know, during five, but days, they used to have a, um, a guided bird walk along the river, and, um, this is part of the um, plant community that's, that supports the, the birds in the area. Um, I've seen, I, I've, I've seen that it has been cleared, that this, this site has been, been cleared somewhat. Um, and from what I understand, and, and please correct me if I'm wrong, after I, I finish talking, um, that there was an opportunity for volunteers to help with that clearing. And, um, the, the volunteers did not have any experience in pruning trees, and some of the trees that are left are, um, being treated like they're specimen trees, and they aren't specimen trees. They need to have their plant community around them um, to create the, the climate that they can survive in for wind deflection, et cetera. And a lot of them have been prone to that they are not balanced and they will, they will not survive, not only because of how they were pruned, um, but also because everything that was part of their plant community has been cleared away. And it may look nice to the untrained eye, but as far as the future of those, those plants, they, they aren't going to survive, and you need to have some professional help um, involved in this. And this is also a buffer zone for sound. And I know that, uh, when it first started being, um, prone, I, I talked to some of the other, I walk my dog down there almost every day, at least five days a week. And they were saying that, you know, they had been approached to have their side cleared as well, and they're like, no, 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 we don't want to have that done. And I, and at that time, we were still having bans at.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. Um, and so, uh, you know, we need to think about that, that sound buffer for the rest of the city. Also, if you're gonna have a wine tasting room on the, on the. And so, you know, we need to think about that that sound buffer for the rest of the city. Also, if you're gonna have a wine tasting room on the on the top floor, I know I will enjoy that because I will then be able to see the views that we used to be able to see. But now only the people that live in those apartments will be able to see of of our coastal range right there. And and I must admit, I do miss the social aspect of very quickly going to creek. You know, they clear out the berries. I understand those are invasive species. But I I do do miss that. And I just hope in the future that that sound buffer and the and the buffer on creek. Now, it sounds like people are considering, you know, the creek and its habitat there. And I'm I'm relieved and supportive of that effort. Thanks very much.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. We have considered sound. We've considered lighting issues. We've considered the riparian habitats and the the shadowing that they need from the trees that are there. You know, that's part of the path we kept pretty much the way it is.
I I did, and one of the things I wanted to say is that as people age, they are not able to regulate their body temperatures as much. And and a lot of the shade was removed from the path. And in in specific, there was one conifer that that was removed. And and I made a comment to someone when they were cutting it and they were like, oh, we're gonna put something back and nothing has ever been planted back. And that is, you know, we are an aging population and that needs to be considered.
At least.
Thank you. So I'd like to second what somebody else said about the speed of things. And I know that whenever people publicly bring up to you that this seems to be going too too fast, we get a recap of, oh, all the things that we've gone about over the last several years, but it's council and commissions and consideration. You know, whatever. But and we understand that that has happened in the past, but Danco is happening now. And Dan Co has been involved. I mean, I I assume that on their end, they've been devoting some hours to this over the last year, regardless of whether or not we've had anything in writing to to view or review. They have something that they got going on. They're working on it. They're coming to to us tonight, saying we want to move forward. And so, you know, I have I have at least three dozen questions for Dan Co. You know, but obviously, this isn't a forum to be asking all those questions. I have, I have lots of questions for the city. Again, we don't have that kind of time tonight. You know, time, income, potential, all these things, you know, who makes the money? Where does the funding come from? You know, is this a, how much, how much of the funding for this project is tax dollars? How much of the income from this project goes to Danko? How much of the income later comes to the city? Where where's all the cost benefit? What is it? You know, how does it, how does it pencil out in the end? And also, once we sign this document, you your DDA thing that you got going on here, there's another meeting next month regarding this, right? It's supposed to be the final draft next or the council may or may not approve that to go forward and sign with Danko. So once that that's done, once pencils on, you know, pens on the paper, what what rights do we have, you know? I mean, we, you know, a lot of people are just saying, hey, let's slow this down. We want to understand this better. Let's have some community forums. Let's have some education. Let's have some meeting of the minds on this before we step forward. So once again, we're coming to the council saying we want more information, better understanding, more input. We want it now. We might have missed those meetings that happened two, three, four years ago. But we're in a process now and we want to be a part of it now. You know, and I know that this isn't the right forum, asking twenty eight questions and getting all the best answers. So we want these forums. We don't, we don't want to feel like two weeks from now, you're gonna have another meeting. You're gonna all say yay. And we're gonna just, you know, have nowhere to go except get angry and feel frustrated and feel like we're not part of the city government. We are part of the government. Right? You know, you guys are here, you're supposed to be representing us, right? The city staff are accountable to the council and the council should be accountable to the to the citizens. You know, and so we're coming to you over and over and over again, saying we want, no, this is what we want. We want meetings. We want to sit down. We want the answers. We want to get, we want to answer the, ask the questions. We want a forum where we get to understand and not just be told, oh, this was already dealt with. You missed it. You know? We're telling you when we're gonna have the meetings. Don't make another decision without us.
At least, just to tell you that there are a lot of people that are actually for this.
I, I tell me that so many times, and they do none of them.
Yeah, because we need places to live.
I have the president of the of the Chamber of Commerce. I have the the president of the Humboldt County Tax Collector, who's a local resident. There are many residents.
Totally irrelevant, totally irrelevant.
I'm just telling you that there are people that are for it.
And some of us are probably, some of us are probably aspects of it as well. But we still have questions. We don't even know if we want to be for it or against it because we don't know enough. You know, there's too much, there's too much we don't know.
Thank you.
Yeah. So my my big question is we need this DDA to get answers to those questions, but we can still, it's not binding us to develop this project. It's giving us a project to, again.
And I guess, I guess we're just still not super comfortable with, you know, where's the off switch? When she's, when she got the the DDA, is there an off switch? And and what does it take to press that off?
I also want that cleared, because it runs after we finish public comment.
If there's momentum, like.
Thank you.
It's going in.
Yeah, after you finish public comment.
Yes.
You find out?
Well.
Yes, if we can close public comment.
Go back to council and talk to.
Yeah.
So May fourth, there will be community input and we will be able to have.
I don't know when in the May fourth. Yeah, I'm not sure where that.
Well, okay, just one answer.
We don't know.
There's a special meeting in May to consider the DDA.
We don't know. That has not been decided.
Okay, you don't know anything, but we will be. You guys are having a meeting in May to 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 make a decision. So now you're saying you don't know?
That's up to the council tonight to decide. Don't take everything on Facebook as.
You guys said it, not me.
That's what we're requesting is a meeting in May for this final comeback.
Well, we need a meeting before that to discuss it. So the people in town can understand more of what you guys are trying to push down.
We don't know. It's it's a secret from the town.
And if you're gonna sign the DDA, does doesn't that mean you're bound by whatever is in that DDA? So how can we back out if we don't like it?
That's what.
You already signed it.
That's what the attorney will.
So then we need to have a meeting to discuss it.
So is there gonna be another meeting for community input on this? And where will we get answers?
It will be brought back to a public forum. Yes, this is a draft. The council got this on Friday. Okay, there this, they are just digesting this as well. I, as staff, we just got this on Friday to, and this is the process. So we have, our attorney can explain the process for the DDA, which I believe he did. And but if there needs to be more verification, we can get to that point once public comment is closed.
What she's saying is before the DDA would be actualized, there would be another public.
Yes, it will come back to council at an open meeting for consideration of the final DDA.
And so that would be then you decide what, but there wouldn't be public comment before you put it into motion to decide it at that point.
There's always public comment at the meeting and a public forum.
Right, right, right.
That's a question.
I am, I'm giving you the answer.
We want to know if you're gonna have a meeting before you sign the DDA. We want a meeting before, not after, before, so we can have a right to discuss what we feel, what information you guys can give us so we can understand fully. Not after the signing, because then we're stuck with it.
Well, this is a.
And that's not right.
This is not a public record. It is, it's, it's, yes.
I mean, I spent my entire.
It's on the website. It's available to.
I spent my entire afternoon going through those, making, you know, for large.
Okay.
So that is on the website.
Oh, yeah.
It's available on Dan Co's website.
It has Dan Co, DDA, you can click it right on the front page.
Okay, it's part of the agenda packet. It's available at City Hall. It's available on the website. There's it's public information.
Okay, and then how you guys can access something is is the helpful, wanting to give any public comments. Okay. Yes, sir.
I would, I would recommend you maybe have the city attorney go through that thirty page document and distill it down to, you know, the points of we're obligated for this, we're obligated for that. If if this is, you know, and this is the off switch. And just summarize, try to summarize it so it's not legalese for a bunch of people who are lawyers and contractors. So so that people can understand it and so that you can have an informed discussion with the constituents.
And that's what Russ is here to do. We just can't get to that because we're still public comments. So this is what Russ will be.
Council meeting and the next one at the end of that next meeting, you guys will be voting. Is that, is that correct or not?
That's up to council to decide.
Okay, well, we're asking once again not to have that meeting be the next meeting. We want to have a meeting in between tonight and when you guys consider moving forward with the DDA with the final draft. We want to have another meeting, which is all community and all the authorities that can answer our questions and like Ted said, to distill it down to where all the dummies who aren't players can understand what you're talking about.
That seems fair because if it was just like we had this and then after we all commented that oh, you you know, it could feel like, well, it was already decided in the public comment. So I think that's a salient point.
Okay. Lisa. Well, I was really gonna make it just like one person making one comment.
Oh, but things came up and that's sort of back to the things, questions come up that I you sent also as Lori Ponce was saying, I just because it does sound like, and and y'all have all seen a a letter that composed unfortunately for fifteen people had signed who also recognize, even though we've been saying that haven't means we haven't, we haven't anything that's focused on the Powers Creek Taylor's Way meeting a district. And because it's complicated, I mean, and even looking at, I noticed I looked at the DDA and some things were scratched out, having to do with public improvements. What's that about? I don't really understand. And you need more time than a council meeting to go into to dig into the details. So that's what I guess I'm, I'm, and again, I'm feeling unheard as well. And that that salient point about community input, not it helps me out this and that it's being dismisses maybe a bit too strong of a word because I think there's some bias up and it's not that people like at least was saying that people are against some things. It's just maybe for me, it's scale. That's my big word. Where things sit relative to the creek and all that kind of thing. But for others, they may not like it for the people they do. But I think it's providing that kind of having forums for that. And that's what that letter of I believe was February twenty second asked about and cited some of the agenda minutes in the last year where others had asked for input on things down in that area. So I just wanted to speak to what various folks have said here in the room and also in the Zoom meeting that to have forums because this is an important area and we're the community and what is the community? What represents the community and what what they want? And we're, we're all over the place and a lot of things, I get it. But I think that having those forums is a respectful thing for our elected officials to do for the cities and for the community. So I just want to not summarize it, but just speak to that because I've also had better experience and others have thought about it tonight.
Thank you, thank you. I mean, it's been very challenging to be the mayor and be the city council persons as well during this COVID thing. Have the willability to have a meeting like we had, for instance, last Saturday where we were all able to be together and at the grant. And there were over, you know, sixty five people, I think, by the end of that meeting. I was really, you know, happy to see everybody come out, but it's been really a challenge. Zoom is, you know, got its limitations, that kind of thing. So anyway. If there's no further comment, I think.
At least, I I have another question. Well, I'm, I need to re-ask my questions because you happened to answering some questions, but I haven't heard any answers to mine yet. But I just wanted to ask again, will there be an economic analysis of any kind for the community and the council to consider before the the vote will happen or this this agreement will be approved? Will, and I think Chris's question, it sounds like that it will happen. We're gonna, we will find out if the council can completely reject the project after the conclusion of this agreement. That's really important. And then my other question was has has anybody on the council talked to other cities who have had the same relationship with Danko, have Danko projects in their city to find out how it's worked for them and if there've been any problems? So you could be getting a really good idea of what we're committing ourselves for ninety nine years to. So if you can answer those questions, I'd really appreciate it. Thanks.
Did you want to? Sure. I mean, obviously, we have not gone into this this project without doing our due diligence. We've had lots of conversations with lots of cities, lots of staff level people that have been involved in various projects. We've had some of our own staff that work for the city have been involved with Dan Co on other projects, not just here in Humboldt County, but across the state. So we've, we've asked a lot of questions. We had, you know, a lot of, you know, I mean, obviously, I'm a city resident as well. I live fairly close to this property and you know, I have concerns. I have a twelve year old son that loves to recreate. I recreate. I ride horses. I ride a mountain bike. I like to take my dog down there as well. So I obviously have some of those same concerns that any community member would have about potential impacts to the community. So we've, we've done a lot of due diligence and we've asked a lot of questions and we've received, you know, pretty good feedback. These affordable housing projects are great opportunities. I mean, I think there's some misconception about these types of projects and their effects on communities, but there, there are a lot of positive benefits to exercising opportunities to bring in funding. These are high dollar developments. These are not this is, you know, this is probably anywhere between a nine and twelve million dollar development. This is not a low end tenement apartment type development. These are very well built developments. There's a lot that goes into these. These are all like they said, they're all net zero. A lot of them are LEED certified. They have a lot of environmental benefits and advantages that are built in. A lot of them build in very nice amenities for the people who reside there as well. So they're not on a scale that I think, you know, some people have seen older apartment developments, early on, early day types of developments. And Chris had addressed that at what point saying, you know, early on, there were some apartments and developments that they did that they're not as proud of these days, but these are different. They come with a lot of scrutiny from the state as well to make sure that they're they're both palatable for the communities that they come into, but provide a lot of benefit to the people who get to reside there. So we've also toured some of these facilities. We've gone through the Plaza Point project, which Plaza Point was actually the driving force for writing the opportunity zone. It's what we kind of modeled the opportunity zone after because it's a very nice development that leveraged housing to get retail commercial and to get amenities for the community. Was also a very big driver in helping to create additional opportunities for small business to come into Arcata. So we actually wrote our zone with kind of that as our benchmark, and that's the type of development that, you know, that we are working to track. We did tour those. We toured the Soral Place, which is the brand new development in Arcata. They're very nice developments. These are very high end apartments with nice amenities and nicer than anything that we currently have in Blue Lake. I can tell you that. And no offense to our our other apartment complexes or aging developments, that these are very much a higher standard of development than what we currently see in our community. So yes, we have done that due diligence and we have evaluated the economic benefits on a host of levels. And that also went into writing the opportunity zone. And I know Lynn, you were a very much a part of the opportunity zone. You gave a lot of feedback. We integrated a lot of your comments and concerns because you are a property owner in proximity to the development. So those were all considered and you and David were a big part of that process as well.
But that's true. But I'm I'm hoping to see some numbers, I guess, or some kind of projections and something more specific than general.
We did do a economic analysis. We had a USDA grant that funded economic analysis to look at where the best investment was for the city. And that's something that we're using as kind of a a direction and a pathway to try and improve the economics of the city. And they're small scale. You know, we're looking at an RV parking campground. We're looking at a grocery store. We're looking at a recreation store. We're looking at more recreation development, whether that's additional, you know, recreation facilities, equine facilities, more trails. So all those things are being consideration are being considered. And they're being considered not just because it's Mandy's ideas, because there's some actual foundation for that consideration. So.
Okay, I see two more hands, but I think we've heard from both of those folks.
Well, they ran away and came back.
Yeah. Diana Lynn, is that you? Diana Lynn, is that you?
Actually, if you guys can hear me, this is Julie Christie again. I don't know if Diana's on.
I am.
Okay, sorry Diana.
Um. I don't really fully understand how taxes work and fund the city. So will we get property taxes? Is it retail? Can you lay that out? Because I understand the difficulty in making a projection. But I also know you're trying to get up to that hundred and thirty thousand dollar mark to pay for law enforcement. That we're going to be losing when the power, uh, contract ends. I can you, can you like, like, you know, Lynn was saying, can you give us a little bit of more? Sense of what this can accomplish financially with some numbers attached to it? Thank you.
Thank you, Diana.
Um, so Diana, I don't think that there's a hard and fast number. Um, the city is at a very marginal point right now economically. Um, you know, we did cut our law enforcement contract in half, which was very helpful because we basically have lost all the revenue from the power plant there. Um, that those lease payments are not being made. Uh, we have cut back on staff. We've, um, tightened our belt as much as we can. Um, so we're, we're at a point right now where we're basically, um, break even, but you know, one. One large issue in the city could, um, put us past, um, that break even point. So. It's not so much that there's a, a hard and fast number and much like, um, the arena allocation. There's not a hard and fast. You know, you know, if we just hit forty, we're okay. Uh, we're looking at the long-term viability of the city. We have a lot of aging infrastructure. We have, you know, roads that need to be worked on. We have a lot of recreation facilities now to maintain. We have lots of trails that we now need to maintain. Um, and some of those things don't generate revenue and, but the way they do generate revenue is when people. Come out to recreate and then they go eat and they drink and they shop. And those are the pinch points that we're, um, really faced with at this point is that we are bringing people out. They're here, but we have no commercial retail available for them to spend any money at. So, um, and looking at the Powers Creek District, you know, we're really looking at driving the economics out there. Adding some housing helps us on a host of levels, but it also creates, like I said, it's like those reciprocal economies of people are living and working. In a space, they're also going to be shopping and recreating in those same spaces. So. It's, you know, it's not, there's not a hard and fast number, but there's really a need to project into the future to keep the city viable.
I'm all in favor of development, Mandy, and, uh, I certainly under- what I don't understand. For example, with property taxes, the city only receives a very small percentage of what people pay during property taxes. I think that's true. Can, is it possible to just break down for us? You know, really quickly and generally how, what sort of activities besides retail will actually benefit the city's coffers?
So, um, I don't have the actual breakdown on the per- exact percentages of all the property taxes. Um, but I can tell you that the, you know, the city's general fund, the majority of it is derived from motor vehicle taxes and property taxes. Um, recreation programs, um, usually break even, parks don't support themselves, um, they go in the hole every year. Um, we do receive money from the state for some road maintenance. It's very minimal. Um, and then our water and wastewater systems, um, we actually are waiting after this, we have a presentation by Bridget Harris, who's from. Doing a presentation on our water and wastewater rates, um, because those are also losing ground and not sustaining themselves. So. It's, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a hard thing when you have a small population. We have thirteen hundred people. Um. That, that base can't support all of the infrastructure needs that we have in our community or the, the. The lifestyle that we all enjoy. We all enjoy these beautiful parks and things, but at some point we can't support those, um, with the amount of revenue we come in.
I really want to thank you. You've been great about getting grants. Really appreciated and I love the, all the thought that goes into it. But I do agree that, that when you can provide the populace with some solids, you know, then it's a lot easier to understand the trade-offs we have to make. Uh, anyway, thank you guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Diana. Uh, I think we should close the public hearing. We've heard from everyone, I think, at least once. So, um. I'm going to close the public, a portion of this and, um, so some things have been, um. Requested and one of them has been, uh, from meeting dedicated just to this. Uh, item. And so I don't know if we want to go ahead and, uh, choose a night for that to happen. Our next city council meeting is the twenty-fourth. So, um, something maybe before then if, um.
Or a weekend.
Calendars. Yeah, that Saturday meeting brought out a lot of people last Saturday. So maybe something like that.
So I think my question would be, how do you want that structure and what is it that you want to discuss? Because there's not much else. I think we've presented everything we have. The, the issue before you right now is the DDA and if there's specific questions about that. Um, and Russ may be able to answer some of those that were kind of the glaring like. He does the city have an out and maybe that provides some comfort level for what the process is, but other than that, there really isn't going to be. Much more information to provide.
Well, I noticed Danco had a lot more information, maybe.
Well, something on what they just presented to us tonight.
Specific questions, specific questions from the community.
Yeah.
So by the deadline and ask Danco to prepare answers and then present those answers.
I think whether it's no work, existing residents are providing as far as income to the city that are in the Powers Creek. Business district without being particular to anyone, of course, but maybe, you know, just so that we know, okay, this is what we get from that. If we get. Some, you know, some like. Businesses in this bottom floor of these, um, residences, you know, what, what are we getting from what we've got right now? That'll give us kind of an idea.
Yeah. So right now we're getting. Very minimal. We have a lot of, we have businesses out there, but they don't generate any real benefit to the city. Um, they are mostly, um, producers and so there's no tax base.
There's, there's the brewery, there's the.
The brewery has a minimal tax base just because of what they, so we only receive a portion of their sales tax on what they sell at their cap room. So everything else that they sell out to distributors, we receive no benefit from that. And that's where the city has said, you know, we can't, we, we got really heavy on the light manufacturing and the production. But we didn't derive any benefit from it from the city. So.
So like the manufacturer, the, the. People across the street there and I can't even remember the name of them.
So how many of those, uh, are any of those buildings out there almost?
One, the chocolate factory. So we get a lease payment from that. Do you know there was a chocolate factory? So we really, and that's why the opportunity zone was written the way it is because we couldn't afford. To lose more property to, to businesses that weren't, we weren't deriving some type of benefit from. So we're bearing the impacts of. Things coming in, things taking place, but there's no revenue generation.
Public comment would be very useful.
Well, that's a good, that's a good piece of information because up until right now, I didn't understand that. Okay, I didn't. I mean, I don't know how city tax base works, you know, for that. And there's businesses there. I just thought, oh. Okay. And, and then this isn't for right now, but in this DDA or at some point in time. You know, I said this at that Saturday meeting, the devil in the details, traffic, noise, dirt, dust. Whether, I mean, is that something we just find out? Well, yeah, now they're developing and if you live by the corner of the, uh, where the museum is. You know, tough luck, you know, I mean, this would be something would be nice to have some projection for from Danco or whoever, like, what does that look like? I mean, just for my curiosity, I don't live right there, but it would be, that's gonna be a big deal.
Yeah, our truck, our truck traffic situation is not good going right by a school, you know, and our truck route has never been good. But we do have a grant now that, um, Nancy obtained to improve that, which means that, um. I mean, we could look at alternate routes too, which we have done as well and.
Information come out at some point in time.
So all of that has, we've been analyzing all, I, I. It sometimes gets a little bit like, oh gosh, I really, I feel like. You've think that we haven't put a lot of thought into it or that there, there aren't things happening because there's. I know, I know, and it's not, and we're not obviously reaching our audience well enough, I guess. Um, but we do have, we have done a traffic study. We've been, and that's been a very long process that we were working on to do. Improvements to the whole truck route. Uh, we've had lots of community meetings. We have a local road safety plan survey. That's been out for months that we have had very little community engagement. We. We've sat on the corner trying to get people to answer a survey question to make safety improvements. But we do have a, um, we do have a grant that's going to improve the truck route and make it safer for pedestrians and bicyclists. And kind of change the scope of that from a business truck route to more of a pedestrian bicycle residential type of.
That's great. Again, and maybe I have not paid attention enough, but this is why I'm asking. I'm not saying, of course you've done this work. This is what you do. You have to have done this. But I don't know if, if it's out there, I don't know where to access it and I'm just asked, so you've answered, yes, we've done this work. Now, how do we all know about some of this stuff, you know, before it all actualizes if that? Again, maybe I missed the bone here and didn't know, but I'd like to know and I wouldn't read it if I know where to read.
I will be happy to provide it. I'd love for someone to read it.
Okay.
For the meeting for this project, specifically the project, you put together essentially a briefing. That outlines everything that you know, that, you know, that kind of forestalls the question, that you guys get bombarded with, you know, shotgun. Questions coming at you from all angles. It's, uh, uh, twenty-six years in the military. I'm sure I dealt with several million dollars with a budget, uh, managing app and I had to brief. I had to tell the guys, you know, this is what you have. This is what we're working on. This is what's in the future. This is everything so that, so that they'll, they can go. And please their bosses and, and so, and so I get the bosses are the people. And so I would recommend. You put together a comprehensive briefing on all this stuff. And, and have a meeting and deliver it. And then, and then you can take those, you know, those few questions that people might have about what's going on and give everybody, you know, fire hose of information. Everything that you know. You know, uh, assumptions, questions that you know need to be answered so that, so that, you know. Then people, then people aren't going, well, you know, how come they don't know about this? How come they don't know about that? It, it, it's really a gr- great way to keep people informed and to, and to make them feel involved. In, in the process that you're going through because yeah, I understand. I was a staff guy. I dealt with a lot of that stuff, you know. Under the, uh, you know, in the weeds and nobody sees what's going on, but, but ultimately the product has to get out to the people. So that they understand it and then they can be comfortable with you guys' decisions.
Okay, so we're going to come back to council for discussion for next steps.
Maybe you can have Russ answer the questions that Chris had raised about the DDA.
Oh, yeah.
So our, and just so you know, our attorneys wrote the DDA. So we have a consulting attorney, um, from the Bay Area. Who specializes in these types of developments for municipalities and then Russ Gans, who is our city attorney. Um, they actually, yeah, so they actually wrote the DDA, um, on behalf of the city and. Sent it over to, um, to Danco to have their input. So the DDA originated from, from our side, just so if that makes any difference.
Uh, yes, thank you. If you'd like me to address that issue again, I, I do want to emphasize the point. Under the development agreement. It's a condition for Danco to proceed. And a right to terminate as well as a right to terminate for the city. If those development approvals and permits are not obtained. So again. Danco needs to be in a position that it has some interest in the property, a right to develop on the real property. So that it is encouraged to actually develop those extensive permit applications, submit those to the city and start the entitlement process. And I'm sure Chris can comment on the issue further, but again, the agreement is structured. So that it will go through design review. It'll go through every step that any other permit application will go through in the city. Uh, and it's a condition of the development agreement. So simply by signing the development agreement. It's not a right to build for Danco, the developer. They still have to design their project, submit it to the city. Go through the permitting process, which again provides the public an opportunity to participate in that project and the scoping of it. Uh, and address some of those environmental concerns and other concerns that are naturally attended to, uh, design review. So Chris, let, you may want to have, uh, have some additional comments on that point, but. That's the synopsis.
Thank you for the clarification. That does, that helps me understand.
Alice, did you have a question?
I did. Um, it was, it was more of a comment. Um, I just, I really appreciate. The fact that, um, the council is, is listening to what the community is saying. And I think having one of those weekend meetings would be awesome because it, it, it seemed like it was a good attendance. And I also thought I heard Elaine talk about how it would be a good idea for. The community to put in comments so that those could be addressed during the meeting. So it wasn't something that was brought up. New, um, at the meeting, not that that wouldn't happen, but I think that that would be a really great idea. Um, and I really appreciated Mackenzie's, um, presentation at the beginning. I thought it was awesome. Um. Some of the amenities that come along with the housing project, like the bus passes, um, and then the ability to work out. Um, and I thought it might be great for Danco to, or maybe. People to come up with something that would be specific to Blue Lake that would be a good incentive. Um, to have the building in Lake. I know our bus system, um, is it really extensive? Um. And I also thought it would be a great idea if Danco, if this would be a possibility to share references from tenants. And existing neighbors so that we could have an idea of what it would be like for the community living. At the housing project. And I don't know if there is, you know, we've talked about how it would be really tricky to have an economic analysis. But if it's possible to get information from stores that are in existing Danco buildings. Um, what they're able. To, or what is contributed to the city as far as, um. Does. I don't know what would that word be. Sorry, I'm not feeling well and my head is a little off, but I hope that made sense.
Thank you. Okay, um, did, Chris, did you want to add anything to the, to answer some of these questions?
Well, I mean, I would just say there's been a lot said, um.
You have some figures about how much money, um, the retail is bringing underneath the property, um. Over by the co-op. I can't remember the name of it.
You mean in terms of taxes, tax revenue for the city?
Uh, well, yeah, maybe, or you know, revenue that's coming in. Yeah. Well.
Well, well, I mean, that's the. The property in Arcata is, it's. Those are, um, condo out units. So they're either owned or I think most of them are, are rented. To commercial tenants. And they, and, and they pay just rent to the ownership who owns them. And then, uh, the city gets, uh. You know, retail taxes based on those different businesses that exist there. That's how that's structured.
I'm talking about Plaza Point.
Right, so am I.
Oh, okay.
But. You know, for us, I think, you know, we're, we're just trying, we, we feel like we're not trying to just do another project. Um, you know, we, we were somewhat invited, we felt like, uh, to the community. We want to do something that. That makes a difference. Um, it's in. You know, for us, we're looking to do projects that can help the community, that can make a difference to the community. We're not trying to push something through. We're not trying to make it go faster. Uh, we got plenty of projects. That's, that's not why we're here. That's not what we're about. Um, you know, we feel that we've been working on this project for. Quite a long time. Uh, most communities are, are, uh, you know, wanting us to go faster. Um, to get the housing done, but you know, in this, in this project, we're not in a rush. Um, we've. We actually pulled back the reins. Last year, we've been working with staff and we said, look, it seems like. There's a lot that needs to to happen here, and. Um, you know, let's just let this project happen as it happens. And so we need another meeting, we're fine having another meeting. Um, you know, we can answer all the questions, we need to know what the questions are. I think there's been a lot of things that have been kind of thrown out there, but it doesn't seem organized enough for. Me to make a articulate response. Or Mackenzie to make an articulate response to what's been said tonight, so. I would like some structure around that, so that we can, we can actually answer the questions that have come out. Um, I've heard a few and I've taken some notes, but. There's been a lot said. I think that. You know, also, we're looking for some assurance, I mean, we. We, we, this is, this project's gonna cost us a lot of time, a lot of money, a lot of energy. And we're not in the business of, you know, spinning our wheels. And so if the, you know, the city wants this project and they want us to be here, we're all in, we love, we love the concept, love the idea.
Yeah, I sure do.
We, we think, we think that the city needs the housing, um, based on our research and. And but, you know, it. We don't want to just go, go about this and then, you know, go a year down the road and get declined, we're not, we're not in for that. So we are looking for, you know, just some some support here in that. We do want to do this project, or we don't want to do this project, so that we can all, you know, spend our time wisely, um. We have been working it on for over a year, we have made. A pretty big investment so far with our, the architecture work that we've done and the studies and the reports and. You know, to go to the next level, we we want to see some sort of level of commitment from the city. That they're, yeah, we want to go to the next level, we do understand that we have to get the project. Through CEQA, that we, that there's going to be lots of comment on the design and the. Um, all the design features and the elements, and we're, we know that process. And we're ready for that process. But we also would like to vet out the conversations that I've heard tonight and. Just get some level of comfort that the city's in for this. Because it 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 is going to be a long haul and. Uh, and but we're, we're up for it if you are. So that's, that's what I have.
Okay, thank you. Alright, next steps, so, um. Uh, a couple things, so yeah, there have been a lot of. Questions and there've been some verbal answers, but I think you would really benefit. I know Emily's been taking notes and we take really detailed minutes, I'm sure you've captured some of the questions and some of the issues that have been raised. So I would really like to see. Uh, a briefing or all the questions lined out, some of them are for the city, and Mandy spoke, you know, well, to those. As far as like historical context for where we're going, what 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 things might look like. Um, some of the questions were addressed to Russ, some of them were addressed to Danco, so um, I think if we could get. A list, I know Emily, you feel confident in your notes, I think we all have taken some notes.
I have what everyone said.
Did you like it and write it?
Yeah, my next suggestion was gonna be that we post something on our website, we have uh, that whole section on this uh, district, I think.
Um, I think with submission box.
Yeah, submission box on the website, so other questions could come in, um, and we could respond to them. Get them to whoever they need, needs to respond and and get a response out, that's also public on our website. So that, um. Yeah, so that, I mean, it helps us too, because it's, you know, it's a lot.
I also uh, want to know if we could see a. A final draft, what the DDA would look like before this meeting and before we approve it. So get the final draft of the DDA, then have the community meeting, and then have a group meeting. That's like that.
And and does that include what you said?
Final draft would answer.
Yeah, that sounds like, yeah, that sounds like, that's helpful.
And it's such a huge document that, um, you know, Russ could give a ten or fifteen minute presentation about just some of the key highlighted sections. Not every section that's in here, but like, some of the things that would address some of the questions in here, and some of the main issues that people have about. Money, time, what are our rights, like just a synopsis. So we could, if we're gonna have a special meeting, we could open it with a presentation that addresses some of the question.
I think that's what we were planning on doing tonight.
Yeah.
Well, it's gonna be your time to talk with. The attorney to have the, that question and answer, so that a not a final could come back. Um, at a later meeting, but it sounds like we're, we won't get that, we do have another presentation too, Bridget is here, she's. Um, been waiting to to do this next summer presentation, so. If we wanted to schedule that for another meeting, um, but if you guys have specific questions that that you have about the DDA, so that. Uh, Russ can address those, that would be great.
Yeah, I I I have three separate questions. Um, one, it was noted earlier by Mandy, I believe, that the project is not in a flood plain, however, uh, page twenty five groundways. Hasn't highlighted that property is located in a flood plain and is subject to current flooding. Uh, which way is that?
It's not in a flood plain.
Property is located in a flood plain and is subject to periodic flooding. Section BD, page twenty five, groundways.
Yeah, I meant that as well.
I think the recall being underwater a few years back.
Well, you could have definition between river flooding or groundwater, you know.
But it probably, Power's Creek, Power's Creek covers that whole area.
What, what?
There's a little burn that goes along. Taylor Way.
What section was that?
Uh, D.
You know, and comes a little burn on Taylor Way there when they cover it.
Section D.
Well, I can, I'm just, I'm.
I I don't, and I don't know what that little broom is, to keep something in.
We can, we can address that.
Keep something out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because it is broken.
What's the next question?
Uh, so. Probably best to rest, um, if after uh, another meeting, we do agree to sign the DDA. It sounds like after that point. It basically goes to the planning department and goes to the council, so like that point is. You know, CEQA comments, and it goes through the the planning commission for for zoning and, you know, uh. Architectural details, is that pressure, is there a an opportunity for it to come out to council sometime, when that time comes back to council?
Is that to Russ? Hey Russ, did you hear that question?
Uh, I think, I believe so, um. But yeah, assuming we do return to the uh, public forum at a future meeting, one of the issues we could discuss is kind of the procedural next steps, right? Assuming that the development agreement is approved. Uh, what is the synopsis of the permitting process and the public's right to participate in that process? Uh, but yeah, the the short answer in summary for tonight anyways, is basically yes, once Danco has the development agreement in hand. We would expect Danco to proceed to submit a permit application to the city of Blue Lake to start. The development process and design review and other components of permitting. And again, the public should know, one of the important critical aspects of this development agreement is to set the parameters of the development at the outset. So what the parties are negotiating is a zone compliant project. And Danco has been very gracious in in accommodating a twenty thousand square foot. Commercial retail industrial component, light industrial component of the project. For the derivative benefits uh, to the city, but again. The development agreement doesn't outline every aspect, every nuance of the architecture, the design. Those aspects would come through the permitting process, but assuming we return to the public and the council. I think one of the things that we could provide for public assurance is, well, what is the procedural process? And we may be able to get the city planner to uh, provide some input at that future meeting as well. Uh, just so members of the public are fully knowledgeable about what the protocol or procedure would be going forward.
So it sounds like once council signs the DDA, it is in the planning department's court, correct?
Yes, it would proceed with the permitting process, which typically starts with an initial application and then planning commission review, yeah.
And I think the planning department has, you know, their entire um, system for public comment and review, so. But it is uh, no longer council review.
Yes, it would come back to us.
Well, yeah, but yeah, once we sign the final DDA, then it's. Planning departments.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, proceeding, how do we want to proceed? Council.
Did you, uh, what are you done for your?
Oh.
Uh, the the third one's the kind of part of the person with the the meeting is a, some sort of breakdown.
Okay.
Um, because this just took me hours, it's going, exhausting.
Yeah, yeah, well, me too.
And I got it, yeah, it was Friday.
Yeah. Um. Does the council want to plan for a meeting, uh, I'm looking at the next. Three Saturdays and today, I know there is a. There's a one, you can plant sale on the fourteenth, the museum opening is on the twenty first, twenty eighth would be after the council meetings. Well, first we have to compile, we need to find out from Mandy and Emily, first we have to compile everyone's questions, they're gonna have to go out to. City staff, whoever the appropriate people are to answer them, so you guys need time to do that. Right, we have to, we're gonna solicit more questions than just what was brought up tonight, right, so that's gotta be. You know, up on the website for however long. So we're looking at, yeah, question is how much noise would the public like about the meeting? Because I can have that on the website here tomorrow.
And are the questions gonna be limited to the DDA? Is that what we're asking for? Because I would like to narrow that scope, so that we can make, because there, otherwise there's. I mean, there could be reference questions or something, but your next step is this process.
That's like.
Are you saying that's a question that's on the website? Are going to be what's at the meeting that we would have, or public forum that we would have? I I mean, people just have general questions, like Mandy, you've answered a lot of them tonight, um, just about what, what's the zoning like down there? What are the possibilities, what can we do down there, a- and. Yeah, there are just. Questions that aren't just limited to what's in this agreement, like, because people feel like it's moved quickly, they don't have all the information, they're not experts, they just have. So. I wouldn't want to necessarily limit questions to the DDA.
Thank you.
Yeah, I feel like this, this meeting has kind of uh, released some tension and gotten some, some, some energy in the right direction, I think that could be all focused in a, a kind of more open-ended community forum.
Right.
With like you and maybe, maybe Russ and uh, uh, Danco. As another panel to just answer kind of open-ended questions and. Um.
And get it in writing beforehand, you know.
Well, so 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 maybe you wouldn't do some of the same ones over and over again.
Because we need to keep hearing the same one.
I know, but it's not, but it's our, it's our communication, it's not getting to the right people, and it's not getting widespread throughout the community, I know you do a good job answering all the questions. Um, and we don't need to have you repeat work and keep repeating yourself over and over again, so I'm hoping we can get everyone's questions. Get them off to the various people that can answer them, have responses that are written out and prepared, that will help us further along forward, so that people are comfortable. And understand what we're doing.
Could we uh, accept questions and then, you know, group the ones that are similar together, and then maybe.
Sure.
And have a queue.
Right, right.
When you consider it prefacing.
Right.
And and potentially have a moderator, um, maybe, you know, so that. We can truly limit the question, so it's not. The same thing over and over, and Trevor has two hands up, can he say something?
It'd be appreciated, no worries, um, I was just thinking to save uh, Dan and Mackenzie. I think there's a lot we can do in the, in terms of prefacing. We can get ahead of a lot of this, I was looking at a Transparent California report. Uh, I think there's a bit of a misconception about the people that this is gonna be housing. Uh, if we can preface with some of that information to use a community education approach, I think we can really start to. Um, get ahead some of the needle comments, like, that's me, that's Public Works, that's every single employee I have, that's everybody at. The city hall except for um, two select people that run the entire city, so. Um, I think if we can start off by educating the population prior. To allowing public comment, I think we can mitigate some of those. Um. Maybe it's something that Chris wants to do, sorry to put you on the spot, Chris, but. Uh, you're here. Um, it, it might be worth noting that. I'm the type of person that is out there raking the fields in the morning, and out there busting them down at dawn, like, or, you know, at dusk, and. We could probably utilize that in in some sort of fashion, so that people understand that these aren't needle users. They're not people throwing trash, I'm literally out there every morning picking up trash. So, um, I don't know, those are my two cents. Guy kind of pissed me off, but is what it is, thanks.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Trevor. Can I ask a question?
This is information of part of its trust, you know, for the public.
Thank you. Okay, can I, I just want to know who the person is sitting to the left of the mayor?
My to the left?
Or me?
Yes, you, wait, hand, hand up, yeah.
Douglas.
Benjamin.
Benjamin?
Benjamin.
Are you new on the council?
Relatively.
Relatively, okay, thank you, I appreciate you being there.
Benjamin McCree. Yeah, Benjamin McCree took over for Olivia Obadad Dunn.
Oh, okay.
Was on the council for, um, not even.
I I like his perspective, thank you.
Yeah, and then we have Alice Finan, who just got on about a month ago. She has to zoom in because she's not well this evening, and she took over for Summer Doherty.
Okay.
Washington State.
Nice, okay. Okay, good, I appreciate you guys, thank you.
Okay, thank you, um.
Would it make sense, maybe, um, to just, I don't know, have like a specific time? Where, I don't know if we could field questions, um, and then Danco could come, or would it make sense to have them there the whole time? Because I know we can tend to go on and on and on about things, so having a set time limit, I don't know, I just, I don't want to. Yet waste people's time and, yeah. Just a thought.
Thank you. All right, well, we've really used up a lot of our time here on this, um, so we do need a special meeting, I don't know if we want to set that tonight, or we want to talk about that, uh. What's going in the council?
I think certainly you did the one of the chat room.
How do what, which part? Have our meeting.
How would you use your second meeting in May, or your first meeting, the second Tuesday, to keep it on track? And then you would have your fourth meeting in May to do anything else?
Yeah, we could put it on the tenth, which is the EDC meeting to a three thirty, I guess. That would only last a knowledge.
We'll get the chart.
Yeah, so we could have a special meeting on the tenth, which is a Tuesday night. That's six thirty and special meeting. So is that to get through the rest of this agenda, or is that to address?
So no Saturday meeting? No Saturday?
Sorry. Our Saturdays are looking kind of busy in May. Get there, but let's just figure out. Okay, so what's on this, what's on this special meeting agenda, the rest of this agenda that we're clearly not gonna get to, or? Because it's not enough time, I don't think, to prepare all the answers to the questions and have people submit questions to have that meeting.
I feel fairly confident that the questions that are gonna come in though, are gonna be the exact same questions that we're continuing to get. And we've answered, and we have the information, and maybe we're just not presenting it in a palatable way.
Right.
Um, I don't, I didn't hear anything here tonight that was any different than what we've consistently heard, and so. Maybe that's on our end, that we're not giving it in a format that's easily digestible. Um, so I feel pretty confident that we can answer these questions very quickly.
Okay.
The rest of it behind the scenes, like I said, there, I have no answers to give, because this is as far as we are in the process.
Yeah, I was thinking our next special meeting would be to see a final draft.
Because, but if we finalize it, then. I think there's some question, yeah.
But I would like to see this in a file version before we have. And before the.
My opinion would be solid, but. Forehand, that would be convenient. That's what I'm wondering.
We're pretty close to having a final recommendation, there were only two outlining items that Russ was gonna talk to you about tonight. Um, to be able to have a final draft for you to be able to, which we were gonna bring back at the next meeting.
Oh, okay.
And we wouldn't take action on it then.
I see, okay. Wouldn't take action on it then, okay.
See a final draft.
You know, at your.
And have a really forum, and then possibly take action on it.
I see.
The file.
Yeah.
So this item is being.
I uh, I like that layout, the question, do we need a meeting to receive the final?
I'm, I'm sorry, I, you guys are are a little bit muffled, so you're saying, you're gonna have.
Or I'm sorry, I, you guys are are a little bit muffled. So you're saying you're gonna have a final draft that will not be the final decision? Is that right?
Just to receive the final draft. Finish up this agenda. Have the forum and then have the action at the final weekend.
The fourth.
Yeah.
So. So we'll continue this item until the special meeting on the tenth at six thirty. And then we'll try to get through as much as we can for the rest of tonight on the other items. And then we'll have a regular meeting on the twenty fourth of May. Okay, sounds good. And then and then we're gonna collect more comments. So we're just gonna take the notes from tonight. You're gonna do the website thing?
Yeah, do it. Yeah.
Yeah, that's three weeks. And then what were the, we didn't get to hear really from Russ. You said, Mandy, there were two things in the DDA outstanding things that we should pay special attention to.
They were, the only two things were the the term of release, the grant, the time, and uh what they are proposing, and then how we would bring the improvements language into um the future uh iterations of this process. So the sit, the staff has been working at length on improvements, um, improvements that would be required as part of this project, including infrastructure upgrades, amenities, um, transit, all of that. So, but we are not prepared to identify it in the DDA because it still needs to be reviewed through the design process in case our additional, if the design does start to morph or change, um, we wanna be able to capture that. So there's a mechanism to capture that through the permitting process. So those are the only two items that I believe Russ was going to speak about.
The straight throughs.
Yeah.
All right, so that'll be brought back to the next meeting. All right, thank you all for coming.
This stuff, please. Quite interesting this next maybe.
Um, we're having a special meeting on the tenth at six thirty. So it's not Saturday. Sorry, I was asking for Saturday. Yeah, no, unfortunately, it's not Saturday.
This won't be the forum. Uh, this, that would just be a meeting. Um, that may.
Do we need to make a motion for this special meeting?
Okay, I don't know. Do I?
So you're having a special city council meeting on May tenth to finish your agenda from tonight?
Well, no, I'm trying. I'm gonna try to get through a little bit more. I mean, I'm gonna ask Mandy which things are.
What we have, Bridgette is has been waiting to do a presentation or the recent, so we have to do that because she has her own.
Okay, so can someone guess? Somebody clarify what we're doing. We're having a special meeting on May tenth at six thirty when we um final draft of the DDA will be brought and we'll have uh those items that were questioned about clarified.
We won't be taking that.
Right. And then you can ask questions of the attorney.
Okay.
Um, have any clarifying, and then you can bring it back to the fourth Tuesday in May for final consideration.
And what about?
That's the time.
Six thirty?
Yeah.
These are all.
No.
Now we were gonna have a more of the public forum meeting in between those.
Oh. So you wanna look at the Saturday, so three meetings?
Yes. Scheduling a meeting for the public, you know, tenth receives the final draft. And then a public forum on on the unknown day to field questions. And then the twenty eighth meeting where we will vote on the final draft.
Where I was saying, there's a lot going on on Saturday and May. I can't make a Saturday move. Yeah. So to be continued.
Or we need to push it back.
Yeah.
Is there a reason why it has to be on a Saturday? Well.
It was suggested.
It was suggested by the public that they liked the Saturday. I mean, we did get sixty five people.
Well, but that was kind of very specific. That wasn't.
Well, this is also very exciting to a lot of people. This is a big deal.
It's it's as big a deal as the RV car.
Yeah, this is, if it goes to the planning after this, then it's kind of our last, our last go.
May fourteenth.
I mean, how long is the party? Can we do it?
Friday.
Yeah, Friday.
But it's sad. Friday afternoon.
I think if you want public buy-in, you need to accommodate the public. And if a Saturday meeting works for the majority of the people in the city, either i- if it's not before your May meeting, then maybe it needs to be after, but this is important.
How are your Saturday? Can you say what's with Saturdays? Yeah, that's what the.
What it sounds like.
Yeah.
That would look like on Saturday.
Yeah. People came out. All right, I think they would come out. Okay, so the fourteenth. Now, that's the, well, there's a plant sale going on from nine to one.
So shut the meeting at three? Three or five, a little bit.
Well, maybe it'll help the plant sale too. There'll be all these people coming by.
Two plant sales. Two or four or something like that. Okay, Saturday, fourteen from two to four.
Need to see if Dan Coe and Russ can make that.
Yeah, that's true.
It's a Saturday.
What do you think about Chris? Have you been listening in on this session? And I can't see.
Yeah, we've been um here. If if people want a Saturday meeting, then um, I mean, obviously our first choice is to have it on a weeknight, but whatever you guys decide, we'll be there.
It would be an afternoon. It would be like two o'clock on, we're looking at two o'clock on Saturday, May fourteenth.
I think I'm out of the area that that week, so I thought Mackenzie could be there.
And you'll have questions in writing, right? We're gonna collect them, the ones here that you can answer and the ones from the website and.
Yeah, I I'm not sure if I'm, I have to look. I have um Saturdays are really difficult right now. We have baseball and double headers and tournaments and.
Yeah, I got sporting events myself.
Right.
But we'll work to do what we can.
Well, the twenty first. That ain't.
I wonder if the Sunday afternoon movie is good in the Saturday.
I wonder. I know. I wondered about that too, because my Sundays are really open. What do you think of a Sunday afternoon, like for two to four or something? Like Sunday the fifteenth. We don't wanna do it on another day. That's eight. Anybody had trouble with a Sunday, like the fifteenth uh May?
Whenever we get a Dan and Russ.
Yeah, I want, I wanna make sure that you're there because what was really good about last Saturday's meeting was having the folks from Storyland present without any questions or comments. Just let them throw it out there with their PowerPoint using the screen and then and then and then came all of the comments. It was really well, well set up and well regulated. It wasn't a free for all or anything. That's, it was a really good meeting, I thought.
Well, I guess what I would say is is that I I think that that, isn't that what we're going to do through the planning commission process is 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 go through the design and I think what we were here tonight to talk about was the DDA. I don't know. I guess there's another meeting scheduled on, I heard, the tenth. Is that what I heard? And then we wanna have another meeting and then another meeting? Is that what I'm hearing? I'm confused about what.
I'm a little bit confused about this process as well. Um, the DDA isn't the design. It's not the time to ask the questions about the fine details because there aren't any. So I think that's where I'm struggling with. What are the questions? Are there, we're looking at the DDA itself, not not the details of the project because those haven't been, the project hasn't been designed.
Okay.
We can't get to that part without the DDA in place. So we can start looking at what are the restraints and, you know, the environmental restrictions and everything that goes on with that.
Public comments that would be moved.
You know, because you go through, once it gets to that part, what they, it goes through a whole process. There's a whole process that a project goes through. It goes through design development review. It goes through sequel review. It goes through public comment. It goes through all of these iterations to see if it's compliant with the zoning standards, the design standards of the opportunity zone. That's, that's where you get to start to see it and have comment on it. The DDA isn't that process. The DDA is what says, okay, we can now start that process. The end result may be that the council just says, hey, I just don't like this. It's not what we want. We couldn't make an agreement. The deal, you know, it's off or we haven't.
But maybe it's too soon to sign the DDA.
Right.
Maybe May tenth is too soon.
Well, I'm thinking it's too soon to have a public meeting from what you're saying.
Okay. You guys, let's not go backwards. We've been trying so hard to get you guys to have a meeting. You know, it's because it's concept. You don't wanna pick apart the design.
We don't have a design.
I get that. I heard you. We don't wanna pick apart the design. We wanna understand more about the concept.
Right.
Understand more about what we're looking at, what's likely to happen when she signed the DDA and this whole thing starts rolling. All right, it's, we're not, we're not gonna daily down and say, oh, you said X, Y, or Z. We want, we want more broad explanations of concepts and how this works and how the, how the city is gonna get revenue and you know, all these different things, right? It's all about public buy-in. It's all about making the constituents feel comfortable with where we're going. Um, there's a lot of information out there. You know, we just haven't managed to get it all in one place to where we can answer people's questions. And I get that you feel like you're getting the same questions over and over. And sometimes you are, sometimes you are. But what you hear and what people are trying to get may not be the same thing. It might sound like the same question over and over again, but people are, you know, some of us are trying to tease out some other piece of information that maybe you don't have, maybe you don't have, and you just wanna scream. Um, but you know, but we're still, we're still trying to pull some of this stuff out. So, you know, if you give us a couple of weeks to come up with questions and you give um Chris a couple of weeks to come up with answers, and then we put it all together and people get to, you know, see, you know, get the answers or whatever, maybe you're gonna find out you're gonna have more su- support. Um, you know, and we're not gonna keep doing this at every council meeting, you know, because it's, as much as it's torture for you guys, it's torture for us too. We want this to be over. We want to get to a place where we're all on the same page. You know, this isn't fun. This isn't fun for anyone.
No, it's not.
You know, it's not.
So here, it's also happening behind the scenes as well, where we're providing this information. We provided the zoning. We've provided the housing element. We've provided the maps, the, so it's not that to ever, to everyone who's asked, right?
So if you have it in a public forum, you're not gonna get every, everybody coming to you to ask for it, right?
I hope so.
You can direct people to that access.
I'm still getting the same questions. So whatever the council decides to do, we'll accommodate the staff.
What's the council's pleasure at this point?
May tenth at six thirty, get the final draft. May fourteen, May or fifteen, two to four, have a public forum that may be repetitive, but would be a good forum for public support, comments, questions, concerns. You know, at least it gives a date on the calendar and would say, we had a meeting here. It was the entire top discussion. Uh, it it was a comprehensive, complete forum scattered across council meetings. Um, you know, this was the meeting. Uh, all the information was there. Uh, take public questions or uh take public questions, write up the answers, post them. Some were very obvious so that the top ten questions can just be, you know, point two. Um, and then May twenty eighth, uh, vote on adopting the final DDA. Twenty fourth, my night.
So you're talking about a meeting on the tenth, then some kind of a public meeting on the fourteenth or fifteenth, and then? Are we ready?
Yeah.
Is that the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
What was the date for the second meeting, the community meeting?
Well, we don't know.
Fourteen.
Saturday or Sunday, but it's up to, you know, I. All right, so we have a motion for a second for a special meeting on May tenth. Another uh meeting in on one of those weekends before the last meeting of the month on twenty, twenty four. That was made by Benjamin McCree.
Thank you, Mandy.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Yeah.
I have a second.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Alice.
Welcome.
In a second, any further discussion from council? Any further discussion from audience?
I would, I would propose that we use an infographic.
Back to council for the vote. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks for coming.
Aye.
I would propose that you use an infographic.
Thanks, everybody.
For coming. Um.
We're taking the sling of arrows.
We're on item five, water and wastewater re-study presentation. Hi there.
Bridgette, I'm so sorry.
We're so sorry.
Where were you, children boarding? Coming from uh. You know, so it wasn't like I was saying.
Oh.
Oh.
But um, yeah.
But you can't stay at the Blue Angle Hotel.
No.
I uh, I I can't stay there anyway, because, yeah, we have small budgets.
Okay.
But no, it's great. Um, so it, since you guys had a really long uh last session, maybe you wanna take some fluid adjustment break while I get set up. You might stretch.
Not sit there. Okay, do that. Yeah, it's great.
We got a vote? Aye.
Aye.
Could you second that?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Benjamin, he heard all of you.
He was asking some good questions.
Hello.
We're putting in two things.
Well, what, who was it?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. It'll only take me about a second, but I'm just. Benjamin.
Said it nice, I did. Because the person who are being asked to move off their ones.
Pause or recording.
We, you don't wanna see much.
Things slow on this one.
All right, but I just wanted to kind of get started. I know that it's been a long night, so I promised to be brief. Um, what I'm here for mostly is just to kind of update people on the process, where we are, give some initial recommendations. I did meet with the staff today, so there are some fine tunings. These are still drafts because we wanna clarify some questions that came up um from the staff and get a little bit, make sure that all the numbers are as accurate as possible before we make a final recommendation. Uh, so where we are, this has been going on far too long. I apologize for that. But we've met with the staff. We've gotten details about your assets, everything like that. But, sorry, I'm Bridgette Harris. I come from an organization called Rural Community Assistance Corporation. We provide a lot of different technical assistance to water and wastewater uh communities, small systems. Right now, we are working under grants from EPA and the USDA to provide these um for you guys. So we're hoping that, the point is, of course, to build your capacity and make sure your systems are sustainable into the future. So that's who I am. That's who we are. Very quick. Um, and where we are in the process is just, this is an initial opportunity for me to share some thoughts with you guys, get your questions answered, and then uh, give you some options based on your feedback tonight to review at a later date and then start the prop two eighteen hearing process. Uh, so our hope was to get these to you, one of your special meetings in May, uh, for you to look at and review, but have some more detailed analysis done so that we can get that done and get this started and the rates implemented by September. It's kind of a bowl that we set upside with the staff. And then, uh, so what it is is, you know, we'd look at kind of just some basic principles whenever we're looking at the, any rates, uh, California's a little special for the property fee. So instead of looking at equitability and some other things, we look at the sustainability. Is the system gonna be around in thirty years based on its financial condition? Uh, how it's compatible with the various legislations that have come out and and the California constitution? And then if the rates are justifiable, just by meaning you can't make a profit, but you need to sustain yourself in the future, so how does that work? Because I know that there's probably a comment, but you just can ask questions whenever you feel like it, so. Also, what can we change? One of the things is you guys have a very complicated sewer and water rate structure. We wanna simplify that. Right now, it's really hard for customers to understand and it's really. We want to simplify that. Right now, it's really hard for customers to understand, and it's really tough. Challenging to administer. Uh, so one of the things is you guys have a lot of like hidden fees. Um, or adding on fees. We want to just kind of. Simplify that. This is what water costs. This is what wastewater costs. Uh. So we're gonna look at some recommendations for there. And the biggest one that's gonna be hard for, for community members is. The removal of tiered pricing structure. That's been ruled on as far as Prop two eighteen compatibility, and it's not. Considered compatible. Uh, you can thank the town, say, I'm a little helpless from all of these. Sorry, um, remove tiers. So those are really the big changes that are gonna be, that we're gonna really recommend. Some basic things, this is it. Uniform rate wastewater doesn't have a lot of flexibility. This is how much cost for a plant. This is what your burden on plant is. Next, it's pretty much a straightforward. calculation. Um, so if you have questions about how that's calculated, but it'd basically be going about five dollars up per residential connection. Up to fifty dollars per equivalent dwelling. Uh, so your big customers would see a bigger increase. But. Um, and then a two and a half percent annual increase after that to keep up with inflation. Some things that we did. Put into this, and the water waste, water study was an increase to salaries for your operators. Uh, if you want to keep them, you have to pay them. Because the annual salary. Increase right now for water operators is significantly higher than it would be normally, just because the cost of living increases that have gone up. So we put in a little bit more, and then, of course, we add a lot of. Increase in electric costs and like that, the costs that are going up a little bit higher than two and a half was in a year. Everything else is, we're averaging at about thirty point two to three point five. Just, with a lot of members out there. We'll get that. Yeah, it'll be, it'll be comparable to only be one of thirty pages total, but we'll do a summary for you.
I was wondering if there's a way to leverage like solar to cover that.
Those are, so.
Part of our capital improvement.
Yeah, so one of the things they're doing is a capital improvement plan and. Being great about looking at what funding is available right now. And how to tailor some of the projects around additional grant. So, you know.
The goal is to leverage as much grant funding as possible to offset some of these big infrastructure improvement costs. Because we do have aging infrastructure that is at its. End of life cycle that we need to really consider, and they're big ticket items.
Yeah.
Uh, but now is a really great time with the infrastructure bill, so this. This actually puts us in a very good position to be able to use this data to go out and shop for funding, and so we're trying to leverage that as much as possible. And solar is something that we are looking to see if that makes sense.
Yes, so solar, um, yeah, it, it is kind of one of those things where. If we get these rates passed, you'll see kind of a lot of improvements really quickly because of that big funding bill that's out right now. And they're working on it. Um, so. Overall, this is it. That's the numbers. Um, you know, one of the things we always want to point towards is sustainability, so, doesn't work on this, okay, three mice are supposed to. So over five years, we want to be putting more money into reserves than we're taking out. You have a pretty significant amount of reserves right now, so that's gonna be used primarily for matching funds. For any of these brands that are coming, but we want to keep rebuilding those so that we are planning for the future and decreasing overall costs to customers long term. So that's what it is, uh, you know, we're tossing about that much to run a rural sewer system right now. Um, you know, I know that. You just had a discussion about who's paying for any future development, Matty, or answer that, so that's good. Um, so that's how much it is, and, you know, we should be saving about a hundred thousand dollars a year to sustain it long term, over the next thirty years or so.
How much is it? I can't see the prices.
Oh, so the prices, uh, it's, it's just gonna be fifty-two percent, uh, fifty-two dollars per EDU. So per equivalent dwelling unit, residential, right now it's forty seven, forty-seven, forty-seven. So it's gonna be a five dollar per person increase first year, and then two and a half percent after that. Uh, you. So. So the drinking water. These are the two things that have to kind of go away, the tiered rate and the out of town rate. We tried to leave the mass. There's just not enough justifiability to do the out of town rate based on. Long-term infrastructure costs like that. So simplify things, make it a little bit easier.
So the city does provide some out of city limits, um, services, and that goes through a specific process for approvals, that was through a LACCO process. So we have to go through LACCO to determine if they think that we should take them on to our system. Um, so.
Local agency formation commission. Somebody look at when you annex property from outside of the city.
So in the past, they had paid a little bit higher rate because there was an assumption that they were a little bit more of a burden on the system. We are pumping further. Um, you know, they're not paying necessarily into everything, property taxes into the city that does, you know, can be thought of to help for some of this infrastructure, but. It's not, through Bridgette's analysis, it's really not. It's not, um, justifiable, and it can really start to look at like some of those equity issues, and we can get in a lot of trouble for it, so.
And the other one is, you, where we want water, we want it to be sustainable, so they're not drawing from city general fund anymore if, if they need to. So those folks outside us, everybody should be paying their fair share, um, because hopefully the city general fund is gonna be.
So they shouldn't be charged more than you're saying.
Yeah, they should be charging more. Yeah, there's, there's really just, it's, it's not a, a number worth administering, a couple cents. Um, yeah, it's, it's a. So, uh, and these are the questions that came up today that I want to just make sure that we're doing, we want to validate our data, make sure it's correct. Uh, there was a couple numbers that I just want to make sure. Uh, we want to look at, you guys have some. Residential units particularly that have a meter specifically for fire flow. And how that's accounted for. Uh, and make sure it's consistent across all of the various customers. We want to be looking at consistency as part of this as well. And then what's the best option for Blue Lake? Uh, because we're looking at two rate increases, we want to make sure it's not gonna be huge. We don't want to make a. Impact that drives people out of town. Um, drive you out of town, or, um, that's what. Or any of those things. So we want to make sure there's, there's two options for water and what's best for Blue Lake, and that's where I would look at you guys' feedback. Because we played the numbers game today for a while, to come up with some recommendations. But really, there's, there's two options that are compatible with Prop two eighteen that we want to talk about. Um, so this is just illustrative draft only. I need to put that out there, because if people are looking at this online, they may not. See that, and so with water, it's based on your potential demands, your meter size, they probably all know that. From previous sessions, but right now you have the current in-town and out-of-town. And this is where the decision would be made is. If we want to increase that base rate, uh, more significantly, right now we are trying to really keep the base rates lower, so we did a forty-three. Dollar base rate across the board. That's a pretty significant one. It's a sixteen dollar, little under sixteen dollar to jump. To read, to build reserves and fund the system sufficiently. Um, and then. Splitting out those three quarters meters. And the one inch. Everybody goes up proportional to their demand. As. Determined by the American Water Works Association. So it's a pretty specific formula. It's used industry-wide.
What size are most common meters?
You have six hundred and fourteen users that are five inches. So this top line is gonna be both people.
Okay.
Uh, you have about one customer in each of the big three meters. And less than twenty in the other three each. So not, um, your biggest one is gonna be the five eighths meters. That's the one we're focused on as far as.
And we have the base rate and then the usage.
Yes.
So everyone pays a base rate, and then you pay based on your usage. So there's some thought process of, do we. Increase the base rate, and people can maybe make up for it by using less water, or do we decrease the base rate, but. Penalize them for using more water, knowing that there's a certain percent that you're just gonna have to use.
Yeah.
You know, do you go like, I'm gonna take less showers, or not water my lawn, or, you know, so trying to figure out what's. So some of it's just perception to you in the process of like, we talked about, do we do a twenty dollar increase, or could it maybe seventeen?
Yeah.
Looks better.
Uh, so that's, this is kind of the option. That gets us balanced. Um, and then this is the usage charge we're talking about. So now, over the next five years. Everybody's gonna be just paying that one dollar and seventy-seven cents across the board. They're not gonna be paying as they use more water. Uh, you just can't do that anymore. It's the cost of delivering water, it's the cost of delivering water. And you can't price for conservation. That's really the benefit of that one. So. It'd be increasing at that two and a half percent a year as well. So this is the option that we talked about. Because it keeps that base rate a little lower, um, but lets people. And lets people have a little bit more control over their bill.
I thought you said we didn't do tiers anymore.
So then, yeah, so I just wanted to draw a comparison between what you have now, but they're all one, they're all the same. Sorry.
All right.
Yeah, so.
Sorry, I thought that was proposed.
Yeah, no, 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 it's a one seventy-seven. It's just gonna be the proposal for everything. But right now you have a tier structure, so I just wanted you to see how it will change. But I'll make sure that's clear. Get it, so, um, and this is the impact on the average customer's bill. So this is the five eighths meter. Right now, the average customer, when you add their usage and their rates, are paying fifty dollars. For water, for just for water. That'll go up six to sixty-two ninety-seven under these rates, assuming that they kind of cut back on their water use a little bit that first two years. Um, so it, it does wind up being a thirteen dollar effective rate for most people. I can break it down in more detail, but that's just to give you an idea of how it's gonna impact the community. Um, so then the other option, and this is your budget impact, you don't need to save as much for your water. Infrastructure, just because there's more money available in grants and things like that, so. For water, for drinking water, than clean water. Uh, so, and it's also, you know, you're saving. It's got a pretty big operating budget, but. Could be saving about fif- thirty-five to forty thousand dollars a year. Setting aside any capital reserve. So that's kind of our goals there. Any questions on that? So, and then this is the other option we can look at, and that is the one that it gives people a little bit more control over their bills. By decreasing the base charge, an increase in the usage charge. It looks better optically, because it looks like the rates are only going up, you know, twelve or thirteen dollars. But then when they look at the. Usage charge, that'll be going up more four or five cents per. Hundred cubic feet, so that adds up pretty quickly, so. The budget's gonna balance, but we're gonna recommend a balanced budget no matter what. It's just how, what the impact is gonna be on communities. So that's kind of where I wanted your feedback is. Asking questions about these various scenarios. There's nothing else to it at this point in time, just these scenarios. General concepts, uh, the process, anything that you guys have as far as questions that I can help clarify. Uh, before I kind of make a final recommendation for you. Or any, a big opinion you have. That's really all I, I've got for you guys. Thank you. So.
And just so you know, pretty much all the water systems in municipalities are going through this process right now.
Yeah.
Uh, with inflation, with the cost of, um, wages going up, every. Every system is offering like a seven to ten percent COLA right now, so our operators, I now have to compete. Against everyone's COLA, so what we're proposing, you must goes into this thought, because now. Everyone is trying to coach each other.
Yeah.
Operators. I also have an operator who is, you know, I think Hal gave us his, his two-year retirement notification this week, which I'm like. Just stop, but it's getting very, very competitive and very expensive, and we have. We've been operating at the bare minimum, and we have trucks that are like nineteen eighty-seven trucks and.
We haven't raised rates, I mean, years, maybe ten years.
Yeah.
Um, since I've been on the council.
Yeah.
So, um, I know it's gonna hurt people. I know there was one person in the audience worried about. Rating prices. So is this something that we're just looking at now and want a decision? This is a presentation.
Yeah, presentation. We don't want to make a decision tonight. I want to give you guys more information before you make a decision.
Good.
About how it's gonna impact customers, but I really wanted to answer any questions you have about the process. And also get your thoughts on kind of how the community. What, what, what you guys think is better for the community as far as. Those two options for wastewater. Do we want to let them conserve more to save more, or do we want to? Just say this is, this is closer to what you're really gonna be paying and let them use. You guys don't have a lot of water wasters, a few. Um, but for the most part, most people are kind of in line with what you would expect. The downside to. Promoting conservation with rates is that it dries out lawns, and dries out trees, and. So that's something that we need to consider. Whether we want people letting their. Lawns become fire hazards. So.
Yeah, something to think about.
So there's a lot to consider. Um, you know, I don't expect anybody to make a decision tonight, and that's good, so.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, um, so you guys have any questions or give some thought to it? Uh, my thought is to just.
Could we have those, you know, paper forms?
Yeah, we'll give you it in a paper.
Look at those numbers, because.
Yeah. And Bridgette's kind of, I mean, she's doing some additional round through things to, to show this. We've, we've also got a bunch of policies that we want to clean up. Um, through this process, which I'm really excited about. The capital improvement plan, I'm super excited about. We've needed that for a long time. Um, and then kind of moving around some of our funds and the way those funds are allocated, you know, hasn't really made a lot of sense. Um, but it's what we've had to work within, so, you know, how do we build reserves and where are they used, and, and having. An identified process for how much do we hold in reserves, and how much needs to be going to changing out this infrastructure? Because that's one of the things, we've been building up some pretty healthy reserves. But we haven't been investing in the infrastructure, so we need to now do that, and it'll, it could look really weird, you know, the first year or two. We, like, all of a sudden Public Works gets a couple new trucks, and we have this, and we get the new, but. This stuff is so old, we've been teetering on the brink of a breakdown every day, and literally MacGyvering stuff together, just not knowing. How much we really should hold and how much we should invest and where those best investments are. So it's been great to. To work with Bridgette and kind of staff to like think through the long-term solutions, and like sort of this infrastructure bill. We're gonna write for every dollar that we can, because that lessens the burden on, you know, the rate payer overall.
And so we pass something like one of the, one of these ideas, and then we get this infrastructure grant, bill, grant from the Infrastructure Act. Can't, it's, it's hard to go back and.
No. Want to go back.
I know.
What we did was, so when I calculate reserves, I calculate it in base on cash needs. Which, um, so what we did was say, you're expecting to get grants for this right now. You're gonna work really hard to get this, you know, seventy-three percent grant for your infrastructure over the next ten years. So that's one of the ways, and then with your already existing savings, it won't have a big impact. However, I would recommend going back and redoing it, doing another rate any five years. So that you can make an adjustment. If your coffers are growing, you can slow down that annual increase or something like that, so that. It's built into the policies, that we do a rate analysis every five years, or something significantly changes soon with the map. So that we're not building up these huge coffers, um, or we're not depleting them, because factors change, and. Five years is about as, as good as you can get with accuracy.
I mean, the nice thing too is a lot of our systems are pretty basic. Um, you know, once you have, you know, we, we have a pending grant right now for new water tanks. It's like one point six million dollars that we're waiting to, we think will get funded. We won't have to replace those water tanks for thirty years, you know, so the, some of this stuff, because our systems are somewhat simplified. We can make those large investments, and we're buying ourselves twenty to thirty years of, you know, investment, so that's really helpful too, that we don't have. Super mechanical infrastructure, but. Eventually, we do have a lot of pipes in town that are starting to fail, that we'll, we'll be looking at some big stuff, but the. The pumps and the tanks and the grinders and stuff are.
Yeah.
You know, they're kind of that one-time investment for, you know, a bit of a generation, so.
So, yeah, any, um, so my recommendation would be to look at keeping the base rate a little higher and the usage rate around the same that they're paying right now. Uh, but I'll put together both scenarios for you guys to look at at your next meeting and look at in more detail. But I just wanted to get that general thought out there and answer any questions before you. Get a detailed report.
Yeah.
And this has to go through a process.
Yeah, so. Are you guys familiar with the two eighteen process? You might not, because you're new, okay? So anything that impacts your. Property, as far as taxes and fees, including water and wastewater. Have to be subject to public vote, so it's not a vote for, it's a vote against. So what will happen is you'll pass a. Like, not a resolution, but you'll. Pass a motion to proceed with the rates as. Process, then they have. In that outlands process, they have to send out letters to every parcel owner. Forty-five days notice, then you have to have a public hearing. All objections have to be received in writing, and they have to have very specific language that'll be in the notification. It has to say, I own this parcel and I object to the rate increase. I can't say like, I don't want to favor, that doesn't count. I can't say like, I don't want to favor, that doesn't count, unfortunately, um, at public meeting. Usually a third party, we can come in and do it, or you guys can do it yourself, usually we come in and do it in case it gets a little bit contentious, uh, count them at the public meeting. Count them at the public meeting. If there's close to fifty percent, we open them and see if they're valid. If there's not anywhere near fifty percent, you guys have the option of passing or failing based on what the public says.
So, it's not, it doesn't hook in with your regular, like, voting in November?
No, no, it's a forty-five day.
Oh.
Basically, if fifty percent plus one of parcels vote no, it doesn't pass.
Oh.
If it does, if less than fifty percent vote no, or say they object. You have the ability to pass it, if you want, um, so.
Clarify if it doesn't pass, then we.
You would wanna go back and redo it, you would wanna look at it a little bit better, um, one of the things that I like to do is have a meeting somewhere between when you send out the notice. And when the votes are counted, where I'm here to ask, answer the community's questions, so that if they have questions. You know, what is included, all that stuff, we send that out in the letter, but sometimes it's better to have that conversation. It's better to have that conversation face to face, not through Zoom typically, um, because then they see a face and they know that I'm not just some. Like, number cruncher that doesn't know who they are. Um, and then we have a good idea if it's gonna pass then or not, um. I've never failed, but there's a first time for everything, so. So, uh, we'll need to, it's so that I would say maybe ten days after we send out the notice. We wanna have a meeting where they can come and ask questions. And, and, and get some answers from me. As the number cruncher, so. I just sprung that on her, I don't think she knew that that was part of the plan.
It's gonna be a Saturday.
Oh, no, don't worry. No, don't worry.
So as long as we can see that in a paper form.
Yeah, so no, no.
And we'll do some public outreach and information.
And just let you know what you need to do, um, if you need any information once I get.
We'll need you to come out from Reno.
That's okay, it's not a bad area to look at.
Well, there's no slide anyways, you can direct slide. So Reno, we still have Vegas, we have Reno. Oh, no, no, they got rid of Reno.
They got rid of Reno?
Yeah, they got rid of Reno. I would like to get this little like back to recreation condition.
Yeah.
And the thing is that we don't have any names on it.
Yes, I'm.
Cheaper, so I said this.
We were so secretive.
There's no names on it.
No, I'm sorry, I think.
Who are these people?
And we only had four, I'm sorry, there was. So this was Molly.
Are we still on Zoom, Molly, are people still here?
Yes.
It was just a. It's very, we should ask the public comment.
Hey, Mike, hold on, where, uh, we just have to switch over, oh, I think. Bridget was using it, so it just needs to be to the other. One, I think it's.
I had a question, I was wondering if I should abstain from this vote, because I work at the Resource Center. Too, and that was one of the applicants, or would that be okay for me to vote in this?
Oh, for the Parks and Recreation?
Molly is one of the applicants.
Yeah.
Oh, you know, you're not gonna make any money from having her be on a commission, I don't think you could do that.
Okay.
If you make money from a decision that you're making, you have to abstain from.
Okay.
So the first applicant is Molly Holman, and Molly is, um, works at the Resource Center, she runs the play group. Um, she's kind of our, our toddler extraordinary, everyone loves Molly, and she had been on our Parks Commission, uh, prior to COVID. And we're just now bringing the commission back now that we have a, um, director. And there's a lot of great stuff for them to start working on, um. So Molly has, uh, requested to re-up her commission status. Yeah, so that's Jeff Bird, and Jeff was here earlier. Um, Jeff, uh, lives down the street, he's a teacher and coach, he has young kids in the community and is taking a lot of interest in. Recreation activities and so.
How many, how many, um, do we have to?
We have five openings, we had four applicants, we were supposed to receive a fifth, and that's why my report said five, I apologize for that. Um, but it did not.
Okay.
That, I believe, is Jen Soderfeld.
Jen Soderfeld, she was here too.
She's a teacher, and she teaches at Blue Light School, she also has a background in recreation, she ran center activities for a number of years for HSU. She was also a prior commissioner. And then the last one is Bettina Eifer.
Oh, Bettina, yeah.
Yeah, you guys all know Bettina. So we'll still have one opening.
Yeah. Well, they haven't met in a while because of COVID, there hasn't been that much going on in the park.
And we didn't have a director and. Poor Emily was trying to hold down the fort, but it was just a little much to take on all of that, so.
So we need a motion to, um. Appoint Molly Holman, Jeff Bird, Jen Soderfeld, and Bettina Eifer. So moved. A motion in a second to move that we appoint those four applicants to the five spots. Any further discussion from council? Any further discussion from public? All those in favors say aye. I propose to pass it, yay, we accomplished something tonight. All right, how, how we do a time, oh gosh, terrible. Um, what do we have to do tonight of the next? Five things.
So they're basically pretty simple, um, it'd be great if you guys could authorize me to, um, execute the deed restrictions for the state park funding. It's pretty straightforward, um, it's required for the town square funding and our state per, per capital grant, and we pretty much go through this for every state funding that we receive. Um, there's, um, but I just wanted to make sure that authorization from council to, yeah, to do that.
Okay. So, so is there any further discussion or questions about what we need to do here? A motion to. Offer as the city manager to execute the deed restrictions for the rest of the park funding project on city-owned property. All right, motion made by Ben McPhee, seconded by.
One second.
Chris Kieran, any further discussion from council? Anything from public? Back to council for the vote halls, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, item eight is the Power Creek District Development update discussion and direction.
And this is more, these are just more update items, there's really no action or anything. Well, serving more as a report.
Three of us were at the meeting on Saturday, it was really well attended, there was over sixty-five people there from the community. Um, it was a good presentation by Storyland, even some of the people that were skeptical, I think, started to see. The need to offset the hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year that we're going to lose when Blue Light Power leaves in twenty twenty-five. So all in all, it was a really good discussion.
And we received a lot of positive feedback too, I mean, a lot of people who don't come to this have provided a lot of. Um, interest and positive feedback about the project and excitement, so.
And then the bike parks does, I don't know what that is. Um, but, in our package, it said that they're moving forward with their. Design.
We're doing a lot of fundraising, um, we've received some more donations, which have been amazing, there's been an amazing amount of support for the bike park. It's really exciting, um, so yeah, we're still in the design of the grading plan and stuff at this point, but, um. But it's definitely moving on a, on a good trajectory, so.
And then the courtyard. There's people interested in. And you know, that's one piece of property council that I've been thinking would be, I, I'd be open to selling that piece of property. But we can talk about that a little bit more, but. I, if it would really bring a little market in a bait and tackle place, and I, I'd be almost open to selling that little corner. But we can discuss that more, you know, and I've been a, a big person of least, 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 and I'm not happy that we sold that property to B and B. Company, but this property, I'm kind of wavering on a little, but you can make up your own minds on that.
What was the alternate? Uh, strike, what was in mind for the corporate?
Um, so we're looking at absorbing a lot of it in our existing facilities down at the water and wastewater plant. And then we do have current office space, uh, in City Hall, where staff also regularly, I mean, they basically, they come in constantly all day long.
And the building is, you know.
And the building is just trash, yeah, yeah. Uh, and then we would look at possibly, um, uh, partnering possibly with, uh, Gary Johnson, if we wanted to lock our backhoe in a specific area. Uh, or there's other facilities, but just make sure things are behind lock storage, so. So we can absorb them in some of our current facilities, and we need to downsize, we really need to downsize the corporation yard, because it really is becoming. The quarter palace, um, for everything left on a sidewalk or anything, so.
You're not a quarter, you're a male, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I think Hal and Glenn would buy everything back.
I've heard people ask where would the yard waste go, but.
Yeah, we get. Yeah, we can, there's, there won't be a problem being able to facilitate that, we could even possibly carve out a portion of the, um, biomass plant area too. There's plenty of property there, they carve out a niche area that could be used as kind of a little maintenance yard and screened properly and stuff. And we're currently in the Surplus Lands Act process, we've done all our applications and haven't received any inquiries to wait.
Okay, that gives us to the city manager evaluation ad hoc committee, need to come up with a. Committee of two persons, work on that, I'd like to be a part of that, is there anyone else that's interested? All right, so what we need is a, a motion to, um, unless any of you guys are interested.
Hey, guys, yeah, you can. I'll take you.
All right, you can do it next time. So what we need is a motion to, uh, appoint Adelye Johnson, Elaine Hogan, to the ad hoc committee for the. Uh, city manager evaluation.
Oh, move the waypoint, Adelye Jones and Elaine Hogan to the city manager evaluation ad hoc committee.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, Alice, you wanna second that one? All right, Chris Kieran made a motion, seconded by Alice, signing to, uh, to have, uh, Adelye Jones and, um. Elaine Hogan on the ad hoc designation committee. Need further discussion by council, anything from public? Back to council for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The passes. Forward, the city manager to request remittance of the city property tax, oh, we have to do that.
Yeah, please.
We need our city property tax.
This is a new process. That the oil controllers put in place, we didn't know anything about it until we called and said where, why have we not received our property taxes?
Seriously, oh.
So they've requested that I either have, um, through a resolution or an action, something. Saying that I can actually request the property taxes to come to the city.
So it can just be, uh, motion.
Yeah, you just, yeah.
And then you will show them.
And then we'll show it in the minutes.
Yeah. All right, we need a motion to, uh, offer as city managers to request remittance of the city property taxes.
Nice, you'll move.
I'm gonna, Alice moves. Okay, Alice moves, and Elaine Hogan seconded is to offer as a city manager to request remittance of the city property taxes, any further discussion from council? Anything from public, back to council for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, because. Council correspondents, difference, see, and then. Consent agenda, the warrants and dispositions. Give you a motion, accept the consent agenda, unless anyone wants to pull anything.
That's second.
Motion by Elaine Hogan, seconded by Chris Kieran, to accept the consent agenda, any further discussion from council? Anything from audience? Back to council for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes, reports of council and staff, let's start with you, Elaine. Yeah, there was an A W O meeting, um. We are still waiting for an update, um, on the proposal to, um. Do some organic waste processing at the Hawthorne Street transportation, and we're coming back to us next week. Okay, I attended a lot of meetings, I will go through them quickly, I have the addresses and everything, want to look at them. Attended an H cog meeting, and they discussed the Last Chance Grave, that he discussed, uh, the Broadway pop-up. Um, which has been in the paper too, um, uh, demonstrations of temporary installation improvements. Um, Beth went to the Trinidad City Council, Beth Burks is the, um. CEO of H cog, if you would like her to come here, she can come and talk to us, she's really open to that, and that happened. That was last Thursday. Um, then I went to a CDC meeting and, um, Roxanne Rothberry does a really good job of that. And they had a lot of good information, talking about, um, the whole made partnership. They talked about Storyland, the bike park, many of the things that we discussed. Um, and then I attended a, um. Blue Chamber of Commerce meeting, and they're moving ahead very nicely to the Annie and Mary Day. Um, they have, uh, music, Rick Levine is on their board of directors, and he's the treasurer, I think, yeah, he's the treasurer. He knows a lot of musicians, because he is one, so he's gonna handle the music. Um, the Bill Nasser car show will be happening, I got my first two applications for booth spaces. The shaved ice, cheerful shaved ice, and the popcorn, um, kettle corn people are the first two I've gotten. And so that's on track for July tenth. Okay.
I went to the, uh, Blue Park Department meeting, uh, I showed up an hour late because the. Last agenda said it's six thirty, it's five thirty now. However, an hour into the discussion, they were discussing the, uh, siren and its necessity, um. The, the public concerned that it's, it's loud and annoying, and the fire department says that, uh, they need it because, uh, some pages are unreliable in everyday life. And due to the all-harmored nature of the department, uh, the siren shall continue, uh, next time.
Did you say five thirty?
Yeah, I showed up at six thirty, and they seem to be an hour in, and I don't know, so, so poor that I. I had a difficult time confirming that it was starting at five thirty, but it seems to be.
Okay, we'll change that on the, um, sheet too.
Thank you, Ben, um, Chris?
Yeah, I went to, uh, to RCA, celebrated five years of the Community Choice Energy Programs, we had a celebration for that, and then, uh. There'll be another official ribbon cutting and celebration for the airport, airport microgrid in, uh, June. So it's going on at RCA, and then with. Read it, um, the. Yeah. Phoenix and, uh.
Las Vegas.
Las Vegas, yeah, really, those three flights are gone.
Because that's the Avalon, or whatever, Avalon, whatever they go, or.
They're still doing Burbank, uh, actually starting a fourth day for summer, like the Burbank place.
San Francisco, though, you can make some other flights out.
Yeah, they're still looking at possibly bringing on Seattle or Portland, we wouldn't have much say in which one, but, uh. They're sort of dating and kind.
Nice.
Getting there, the next step of, uh. Developing a play with Alaska. So let's see how that plays out. Yeah, we had a big, like, five-year strategic planning meeting, um. Just to come up with issues for Reddit to focus on, and a lot of it is housing, uh, healthcare.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, yeah, those are sort of the main focuses. Yeah, those are sort of the main focuses, um, moving forward.
And I just want to announce that the One Inca Plant Sale is May fourteenth from nine to one. The museum reopening is on May twenty-first from eleven to two, and after that, the museum will be open on Saturdays and Sundays until October.
Yay.
Yay. Okay, um, we are now at.
Oh, yeah, Miss Alice.
Oh, Alice, oh, Alice, I'm sorry, yes.
That's okay, I know it's hard because I'm in Zoom land. Um, the, let's see, the Public Safety Commission meeting was canceled for April. And then, um, I'm not sure when the Mad River Alliance meeting is, that's quarterly, right? So is that?
It's very hit or miss, Alice, I'll talk with, um, Tim Brodmann and see, but I know in the past summer, I'd had a really hard time figuring out when they're meeting. And I have a feeling they just really haven't been meeting.
That's what I looked on their website and it wasn't updated, um, since last year, so I signed up for the email updates. Um, but I was gonna reach out and potentially take, um, the school kids out there because we were talking about where our water comes from, and, um, that would be a, a great thing to, to do if it's a possibility.
You'll trip off there.
Yeah.
Okay, um, city manager report.
I, I pretty much just worked on this packet the whole time, so provided some, um, input on some of the main items. But I'll provide a written report, uh, more of an update at the next meeting, if that's okay.
Well, probably the fourth meeting on the twenty-fourth.
Been busy.
The meeting on the tenth. Yes, always pre, this is for future agenda items. I have two, um, one, we need the updated meeting, did we get the final meeting? Annual that we all go to?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Those are updated. And then you just came up with a couple of changes, so.
Yeah.
Um, and then the second thing is that, um, I, through work, we're renting a venue in Arcata, and so I just really liked the zero waste guidance that the city put out when you're renting city facilities. Um, it gave really specific, you know, guidance, um, and then, you know, resources that the city provided, you know, as far as like free compost bins, which I know we're not there yet, but, um, they also for city-owned facilities that have like the commercial dishwashing machines, they provide the dishware, and you have to use that when you're renting out the facility, there's no disposable stuff, so just stuff like that, maybe as we're updating our parks faster plan or some.
And we just have a lot of that.
We have some in place already.
I just kind of saw it because COVID shut us down, but we had started that where you couldn't have single-serve water.
Right.
We provided the igloos, the reusable cups, we purchased some, um, some buffetware and plates and things that people could use. Um, so we were working, uh, with Maggie Gaynor, to kind of model some policies, um, and that's something that we've talked about now that we're starting to kind of get back that Trevor will be looking at is updating those policies, but yeah, I think those are great. Uh, because we've even talked about like with Darcy, being over the doghouse, you know, not selling the single-serve. Um, and she's doing more of the compostable stuff as well, so making sure we're building that into all of our agreements.
Great, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, future agenda items, all right, uh, adjourn, is there any other business? Okay, motion to adjourn from someone?
Oh, who would be adjourned?
A second.
Motion by Chris Kieran, seconded by Alice Hyman, to adjourn, any further discussion from council? Any from public, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
For adjourn. Sorry.
Thanks, Alice, hope you feel better.
Thank you so much, y'all are awesome.
So are you.
See, this is the beauty of Zoom, you have, you could be sick and still show.